So, let's see. I'd like to open up the meeting at 6:04 PM. And first order of business, are there any adjustments to the agenda that we have tonight?
No, not really.
Okay. Any public comment?
Um, I actually, when I came here last week to go on here, I actually asked about your map here that's on here, and asked if you had ever considered reproducing that and making it a fundraiser for the town of Woodbury. Because I'm sure if you went around to all the cottage owners on all those lakes, probably get about eighty percent of the people wanting to buy that.
Look at this one right here.
Yeah.
With the lair, with the lake lair, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how much that map costs, but I don't think it was cheap. And it's actually a mile or a layer over a topo, larger blown-up topo map.
But you could take that to, say, CVS or something where they can reproduce it onto like a canvas. And so it wouldn't have to be that. It would be like a canvas.
Talking of a bunch of camp wall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is not that expensive.
No.
We'll talk to our town clerk about that maybe, as to what cost.
Get one here for people to look at if they wanted to order it, then we could order some or something.
I mean, I asked just probably five people on our lake about it, and they're like, "Oh, gosh, we'd love one."
Of the whole town or just your lake?
No, no, the whole area of all of Woodbury. Yeah, they thought it was a wonderful idea.
That'd be a great wall hanging.
Yeah, it sure would, especially at people's eyes.
See a little bit of water.
Yeah. Especially with like, you know, all the lakes being named and the roads and everything.
They'd have to be that size, pretty much.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they could, you know, make it bigger or probably a little bit, maybe even smaller, but... Because you can go to like CVS and just like give them a thing off your phone and they put it on a canvas and, yeah.
All right, well, we'll look into that. Any other public comment at all? Then I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 8th, 2019 Select Board Meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the Cabot, I keep on calling it the Cabot, the Old Quarry Road Agreement pretty much has, the opening paragraph is pretty much the minutes of that meeting as far as I'm concerned. So, we'll let that stand, but we haven't totally approved the agreement yet, so when we do, we can consider those in part, the minutes from that meeting. So, next on the agenda is the release of town leased land with Mike, Mike Miller, and I'll let you from there.
Well, up here, and I don't know how much information you want, but I will go through and give you as much as I have. I am Mike Miller. My wife is Sarah Miller. She inherited the camp at 163 Sunny Lane, and so...
Can you, which pond, I mean, I don't know all the...
Greenwood Lake.
Oh, Greenwood Lake.
Yeah, if you go down Meadow Lane and Sunny Lane is the left.
Okay.
Take a left off Meadow Lane.
Okay.
This was Greg Warren's last thing. Is that relatives?
Uh, no.
No.
Nope. So, she, her father was John Brown, who had purchased it for Sarah to have in, I think, 2008, and he bought it. We live up in East Hardwick and haven't used it as much as we had hoped we would, and once we inherited, we decided we would sell it. The buyers in doing the title work found that they'll just, you know, just go and...
Because I read through all the emails, I kind of understand.
Yeah, there was, so a portion of said premises, once you look back, it's kind of referenced later on, it says a portion of this is leased land, but it's not till you get back till, this is 1952 with Greg Warren Maronelli, that it actually goes through and says what the leased land is, and it says a portion of the leased land is subject to an annual rent payable to the town of Woodbury. Now, we're not sure the full extent of what that was, whether it was part of the road, was it, you know, was the road when it was created, deeded to the town and then given back as a private road, or some other thing that came up, or is it, does it go all the way back to the original deed site? When I traced the deeds back to 1890, it stops having the leased land reference. So, it seems like somewhere between 1890 and 1910, they've started to have a lease. But we've never paid a lease, but it just appears in the land records. So, typically what you would do in a case like this, if this was a private lease or something else, is you would quitclaim your right to that land. Our understanding from Chris Green from Hardwick, that he's come in in the past because a number of properties on Sunny Lane or in that area have this same lease.
So, they've come to the town in the past?
They've come to the town in the past and the town has quitclaimed it to the property owner because it serves no benefit to the town to own that right.
From collecting anything on it, we don't know we own anything, so...
So, when I did some, just some look at the kind of, the road kind of hooks to the north, the next property to the north of us just sold last year, it doesn't have anything nor does anything north of that have any reference to a lease, but all the properties south of us do have that reference. So, it may be something that goes back for some, for some other reason that was in there, that happened to stop at our property line. So, you may have other people come in for Sunny Lane.
Nobody knows what it is.
Nobody seems to know what it is.
Probably take a lot of digging to try to find out.
Yeah, if somebody dug it and figured it out, that would be interesting. But for us, what we need is, we can't sell the land without clean titles. So, our attorney, David Bookchin in Montpelier, he drafted up the quitclaim deed, and if you're willing to sign that over to us, we can move forward on hopefully closing on the property next week.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Do you need it from all of us or just from the chair?
Uh, just from the chair, and it's supposed to be notarized, so I don't know.
Diana can do that. So, I've got a copy here, so...
Very simple issue, nobody understands.
We don't really know why, but it's...
Every once in a while we'll see something odd like that that comes...
Wait, I'm sure it made sense when it happened.
Yeah, and we've seen him sometimes in the past, which is what we were looking for, is occasionally it goes back to the initial layout of the town, and if you look on the thing, it does go and say, "This was gospel land." And so, sometimes those carry forward right from the initial plowing of the town, but when I looked it up, it seemed to stop at 1890, so I don't know.
I just wrote what I am, oh, ready, can I? Should have looked ahead.
The second copy is critical. All right, well, thank you for making this painless.
Thank you. Good luck with your sale.
Thank you.
While we're signing things, I've already signed it, so there's our minutes that we need to pass on to Diana about that part. Randy, we're ready for the town treasurer?
Do you hear anything else from memory? Shake a call back again?
Never heard a thing, I'll tell you. I have her number, I could call her, but...
So, we still have yet to receive Swenson's fourth order for the last fiscal year. This will go into the town report. Financial statement, financial balance sheet, and then the last page is the due to, from.
So, that'll show us a reduced revenue for the last fiscal year and revenue that'll show up on this fiscal year?
Correct. Yep. So, over the last two weeks, as far as income, fleet permit, a cemetery plot sold, and this is for all funds. Reimbursement from the Fire Department Insurance, we received the last payment from the school building fund for the roof. Zoning permits, vehicle registrations.
So, we've received all the money for the roof, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Delinquencies over the last two weeks was $1,938.26, and I can give you these, Michael.
Okay.
These printed out. So, as far as on the balance sheet, for the $26,862.16 as an asset, so just explaining those. So, is this Swenson money?
That's what they're supposed to pay.
Yep, and then we have the MRGP grant. That's $11,300, and then I have the FEMA LHMP grant, which is the 6212, or 7612, $7,612, and I can also give you that.
Okay, great.
Those three total up to $26.
Yep.
So, that's...
So, recommendations, last page, your due to, from. For the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, there's $22,683.10. I am recommending that the monies go into the highway, because that's where the expenses of the equipment are being spent.
And that would be it?
Even by sending it over there, unless the highway goes over this fiscal year, that extra money will still be in the highway.
And is it, my understanding is that you'll create a highway equipment...
Capital.
Capital.
Capital fund. There'll be an item line every year in the highway, projecting an expense.
Because what I'd like to be doing is starting to save money toward the next purchase.
And it'll still be in the, if you don't spend it, it's still going to be there in the cushion.
I think, you know...
But if you go over in sand or like last year's winter for time, it's going to make up in other things. But there was almost $15,000 left over in the highway at the end of fiscal year. So, it was closed, but...
What I would hope that we would continue to do, you know, with the HERF fund schedule, which we're going to close out, and we should probably check, can, I'm just wondering if we can do that without permission or...
But we're not closing it.
We're not closing it.
And the money is still being...
But it's no longer a reserve fund, that's the thing that I'm a little concerned about, whether...
But it's still in the highway fund, which highway money should be in the highway.
Right, but can we, can we as a select board take the money from the HERF fund without town permission and put it into a different fund in the town highway? That's what I'm wondering, because a reserve fund usually, I mean, we haven't been, we've been using what we had called the HERF fund, the reserve fund, to make the yearly payments without...
Because it's on equipment, so I think, it's actually an equipment fund, so you have to spend it on equipment, and we're going to spend it on anything else, it has to be.
And in the HERF fund, you know, we had designated in the schedule that every year we would be putting nine, you know, this is $90,000, which I would like us to continue doing, is budgeting $90,000, and then there's a percentage of the Swenson Quarry money that also goes to there. So, each year in this schedule, we're putting like $100,000 into the equipment fund, and I would really like us to continue doing this, so we have money to...
Toward buying the next town truck or greater.
So, there's two things there.
Okay.
Do you want to check with VLCT to make sure we're not closing it? Because the fund can always be there.
Okay.
But as far as transferring the funds from the HERF fund into the highway for the expense of...
Let me check with VLCT, just to make sure that we're...
So, the other thing with that is your percentages for Swenson are currently 40, 35, and 25. So, if we eliminate the monies in the HERF, how do you want appropriate the percentages?
I would want to keep, and we can discuss this more, because we're also thinking about changing the percentages a little bit and putting less in the paving fund. But what I would like us to do is that part of the Swenson money that is going into the HERF fund, which is 40%, if I remember right, yeah, 40%, that that go into the new highway budget equipment fund.
And that's what this is.
So, it would then be, no, 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 it'll actually be in the highway, because this is where it'll be.
Right, but my only fear is though if we overspend, we're going to be tapping into that money, which we're trying to set aside for...
Correct, correct.
Right, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't really, I would like to not have to tap into it for gravel or...
Which is, I think, why it was created in the first place.
In the reserve fund, right, so that it wouldn't get used for other things.
Correct.
Because we do have the new piece of equipment.
I'm going to be, let's think on that one.
The new piece of equipment that's coming up, it is budgeted out of the highway.
Right, the low pro?
The new payment, right.
New payment, yeah.
And that's where we've set the money for, because like, my goal, mine might be to get to where we're borrowing less and paying more upfront.
That is the goal.
And we're in a good position right now, because we've gotten rid of, what, one?
Got rid of two leases.
No, we've got rid of two. This year was our last year of paying for both.
We've got a truck probably coming up in the next 12 months-ish.
Well, when we start talking about equipment, Greg and I talked a little bit about this, so we'll talk about...
You know, we got a 13, it's probably, we got to be planning to replace that.
We're hoping to get...
With the goal of getting those two trucks separated by their useful lifespan of use.
Yeah, and somehow...
Getting one new, one old.
A new use greater, that's kind of the...
Somebody asked me the other day, "Do we still have the 550?"
We do.
Yes.
We're planning on keeping it, that's what they said, the idea was to get rid of it.
Well, that was the thinking, you know, that was the discussed, that was discussed, but you know, Greg has always been in favor of keeping it. I think that, you know, it's, that we should keep it.
It's not worth anything to sell.
Not really, no.
The other side of it.
Well, I think, I think the way to manage this is the same way, we got a very positive response from our spreadsheet with all of our equipment on it, which you then got, if you pay it out over the life of your equipment, it'll tell you where you are and then what you can and can't afford to do. So, it would answer questions like, that's why in improving our capital fund, which we got approved this year, that meant we reduced a vehicle in the fleet, because mathematically, that's the only way you could make the dollars come out. That was, that was a fiscal decision the Fire Department had to make, is like, if you, if you're going to reduce your interest cost, you've got to drop a vehicle from the fleet. And that's what we did, and that's what's happening in the next couple of months, is we'll be one less vehicle. And that's the thing we need to do, is put, put everything on the same spreadsheet, which project, will just project out the lifespan of those vehicles, how much per year.
I think Skip probably had one of those for us.
And I've got one we can put it in.
I have, I have, I have a copy, I brought down the old HERF fund file.
Yeah, because if you put it, put it right on your computer, then you can just, it would answer all these questions.
Like you said, it's a usable truck right now, it doesn't have any great...
Are you ever going to replace it? You know, keep it till it's gone?
It would never, once it no longer is functioning, it will never, it won't be replaced.
Or it, or it's what we're looking for, breaks down you to death.
Right, well, that's, that's Greg's thinking, is that it still serves a function, it's paid for.
There's no reason.
Doesn't owe us anything.
Doesn't owe us anything, and you know, like in the winter, it's basically the salt truck. So, rather than putting the salt in like the low pro or having to, you know, salt with a 10-wheeler and then brush back and load it with sand, it can be already with salt.
Saving a lot of rush.
So, it saves time, it saves effort in the winter for the winter plowing, and it's handy for, you know, back road.
Right, so all you got to do is keep an eye on what it's costing you.
Exactly.
It's starting to cost, like, we've got one rig at the firehouse, it's cost, was costing us a lot of money.
Right, so this one has cost us a lot of money right now.
You just got to keep an eye on that, and when it starts costing you too much, you go...
I think it did get some repairs so it could be inspectable.
I wondered about that, it wasn't very good shape.
It wasn't a lot, I don't know how much of an effect, I think it's still...
But I'm thinking in this view, we might want to be taking a little bigger picture view with, you know, we're talking, we've had the conversation about a greater, we know we have another dump truck coming right up, it'd be nice to have 100 grand set aside.
And that's a discussion I'd like to have us to have over the next, you know, and starting at the next Select Board Meeting.
Like, maybe get these rigs on the spreadsheet, because early we need to know from Greg what replacement schedule, because I know dump trucks are eight years, seven years.
Well, just while we're on the subject, you know, we talked about it last week, and Greg is thinking that the 2013, we'll get one more winter out of it, and that'll be...
We need to have a new one by next...
That'd be seven years, so next spring, you know, we'll look into getting...
But that means mechanically, are we going to be able to push the second truck off of two or three more years?
Probably not, maybe two.
You see, I'm going, this is, that's where that char will help us, because we're trying to, we need to push those vehicles.
So, that'll be seven years with the 2013. Right now, Greg is going, he's going to look into what the, you know, what we might get as a trade-in towards a new vehicle, because it's still, you know, it's still in okay shape, yeah. So, hopefully by, let's say, later this summer or fall, we'll have a sense of what we can expect as a trade-in towards the cost of a new truck. So, you know, even before, as we're heading into budgeting for the next fiscal year, we'll know, we'll have a good idea of the expenses.
And that'll be helpful, we'll get our equipment on the spreadsheet, so we'll have something to look at. And that's where I just don't know time-wise, I've fished around a little bit, but I just know we want to get those trucks further apart than ever, however we decide to do that.
So, we can push our luck with the other one, maybe try to get two.
We probably going to have to, because they were bought so close together.
So, I will check in with VLCT, I, you know, if it's not, if it's not okay, then what we've been doing by making those payments every year from what we called the HERF fund, and you know, we're already kind of going out of what we should have been doing, because that was never a topic at town meeting that I remember.
It was VLCT, any government accounting assembly that I attended, which we never did up until last year, was make the highway its own fund.
That's what they're suggesting we do, yeah.
Yep, which is what we're doing.
And as of last year, the general fund paid the highway $72,000 for the equipment in it. And it should have been money out of the highway for the highway.
Maybe it's not an issue, if we've been making the payments on the trucks from the, what we had, we'll call in the HERF fund, and there haven't been any red lights anywhere, then it sounds like...
But it's not showing in the highway fund. The expenditures need to show in the highway, and they're not showing if they're in the HERF. So, all that's been collecting in the HERF right now is Swenson revenue, and there was a cushion left over of expenses, just a cushion left over.
Right, it was just there, yeah. So, technically, the HERF fund will cease to exist, and it will have a heavy equipment replacement fund.
Capital.
In the town, yeah, capital.
Yep. And that can be tracked by fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, what's left over for monies, and every year appropriate an expense for that item line. So, this is something that is due as of July 30th, the end of the fiscal year. It's from VLCT, it's just your checks and balances as far as your internal controls. It's a questionnaire, I fill it out, yes or no, do these apply, and it's just making this Select Board aware of kind of how small the town is and how many people do this thing.
Or make a few things, yeah.
So, I can leave this with you, and in the end, it needs your signature as chair and the date, and then I scan it to VLCT and I keep it on file for us.
Okay, could I just take like a day or two and just go over it and...
Yep.
Would you guys like copies of it, just to look at it and...
Yeah.
Dumb question, we are following all their, assuming we are.
Yeah, I mean, there's, obviously, there's recommendations.
You just question, just something you feel we should be doing that we're not doing.
Yeah, if there are things that they're recommending that we aren't doing and you would like to see done, that would be good to know also.
Does each town official have copies of these policies and procedures? No, not every single town official.
And what would the policies and procedures be, financial management policy?
Our, our, no, 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 our personnel policies, our harassment, our...
Okay.
All these policies. We have over 50...
I think we had them once, because Skip gave them all to us.
Yeah, and I think I, did I send you the personnel policy?
I've got personnel policy now.
There's 50 town employees.
There are 50 town employees?
So, when I do my, my W2s at the end of the year...
Oh, I see, I see, you're going with every, okay.
Officials, so ballot clerks, they're talking about everyone, no, we don't.
So, we, when we...
And even highway, I mean, there's...
Yep, when we adopted the sexual harassment policy, I know we sent it out to every elected and appointed official, but that was three years ago, so there are probably new people that we have...
There's new policies, there's new adjustments that were done to the personnel policies, but...
And the personnel policy, it really doesn't apply to, the only elected officials it applies to are the town clerk, the assistant town clerk, town treasurer, and assistant town treasurer, and the highway. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't really apply to...
But within that, there's certain, there's, I don't know, there's just certain...
There is a sexual harassment policy, which is kind of an addendum or appendix to that, which we have sent to, you know, two or three years ago, we did send it to everybody, but we haven't kept up sending it to anyone who was, who was new. This conflict of interest policy that we've been talking about, that should go to every appointed and elected official and employee.
So, it's just, yeah.
That's the question, honestly, as long as you feel like we're in good condition with it, that's all, you're in it every day, so...
And, you know, we could make that, you know, the sexual harassment policy, maybe that's something that our Select Board Assistant could oversee each year on after-town meeting day.
All the new people that...
All the new people that come on, yeah. That was something that we could try to...
Yeah, that would be really, yeah, that would be a sure to do, yeah.
And if there's anything else, I mean, I could...
Other handbook, right.
Yeah, I mean, we could send everyone the personnel policy, and that would be a bit of work.
Ask them to come in and pick it up.
There you go. But most of it really wouldn't pertain to them, but we could do that if that's recommended.
So, I guess, yeah, come back with whatever you think we should do that we're not doing right.
If you think everything's fine, and we're good, then I'm good at it, it's just if you saw that there was something that we ought to be doing that we're not.
So, if you look as far as the treasurers payout for 2019, last year's...
What page would that be on?
We're on page 3. So, with me, and I handled pretty much...
So, are you looking...
So, I'm on top, and Tom is below me as my assistant, where we budgeted, and we, between our two, we were still under budget by like $300. But he is going to be taking more over now, I feel that he needs to, to do more checks and balances to make. And so, you'll see his increase more in line, should maintain, well, maintain what is budgeted for.
Yep, so here, when I look at the assistant town treasurer, it's actually budgeted for less than fiscal year 19.
Correct, because I was doing everything, I was doing the 941s, and I was doing the Department of Labor, and those are quarterlies that if he was doing it, he'd be checking over my work.
Okay.
So, I spoke to him a couple of months ago, and he's going to be taking those over now, so he'll be coming in more often, and it's just another check that, over me.
So, you anticipate that that budgeted amount will be more than what it is budgeted, when it comes down to the actual for that year?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the actual for him doing what he was doing last year is about that.
Because he was just doing bank rest from home, is what he was doing, besides that last month that I had to take time off for Jimmy, but, but yeah.
Okay.
Because I want his hands in it more, more so that if anything happens and I can't be here, that he knows he's in the house.
He's familiar with what's going on.
Yep.
So, that's, so as far as my checks and balances, definitely having a second... So that's, so as far as my checks and balances, definitely having a second set of hands in on it, on my, my treasurer part. But they asked for auditors, how much training, if they've had any training, the select board training. And it's just, if not, then that's their way of, maybe you should think about doing that.
That's fine.
I did go to a V L C T municipal budgeting day long forum a few years ago, but.
I was gonna go in June, but it just didn't work out, time wise.
So if you could.
So make copies.
Yeah, make copies and Brian and Paul will get a chance to look at it. And if you guys have anything, any questions or whatever, send them to me. And I'll probably, let's see, probably Thursday I would be able to get it back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if you guys can, if you have anything, let me know by then and then we'll, I'll sign it and you can send it on to V L C T.
Do we want to discuss the tax rate? Do we want to?
Let's do that in a special.
Okay, because I kind of threw a lot at these two tonight.
I got a quick overview, yeah.
Do you want to talk about any of the other things that I bulleted for the agenda?
Let's see.
The paying off the line of credit or?
So I briefly spoke with Brian about it. Going in and, and our line of credit is up to two hundred and fifty thousand. I have borrowed sixty thousand. And as of right now, I'm gonna wait until a good cushion of our tax money has come in.
Makes good sense.
To pay it off, but in the future, knowing that our due to, due from cushion has, you know, three hundred and eleven thousand in it, that I will be using that and I, and I.
So this is monies in the town accounts right now that you can use?
Yeah. So when it's fund accounting, it's all in one paw.
This represents all of the money that you have in all these different funds, yeah.
Correct. I went and met with another.
I was gonna ask you about that, but we didn't get to it, what does that number shows we have in excess funds?
No, the last page is the breakdown explains where all the money is.
Yep, yep, where it is, yep, no, I got that, yep.
But that being said, where I met with, she would just use the funds instead of having to go out for a line of credit. Knowing that when tax money comes in, it'll come back and you don't have to pay interest on borrowing money.
I'm assuming it's a low interest rate we're paying anyway, right?
Two point, two point something. But even, so note to self, going forward, if this comes about next year, I will not go for a line of credit, I will be using.
Now, does that line of credit stay open for us or do you have to redo it?
Just for the fiscal year, each fiscal year it does.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
Yep.
So typically we.
It's, it's a tax anticipation note, so it goes, it's a window from now until October first.
Gotcha, okay, just trying to understand that, thank you.
So there's that one and then, so I, I spoke earlier about, so doing the tax rate last year, we had anticipated exactly what our revenues were supposed to take in and we only received half of it. So I had discussed really going back through the budget for revenues. Because as far as our expenses at town meeting, we have an amount that the town voted on and that's solid and gold. As far as revenues, there was a lot we over budgeted for last year and we didn't, it kind of bites us when we actually anticipate for that over budget and we don't get it. So there's probably ten, fifteen things that I would like to change that we are over budgeting.
Or over anticipating revenue.
Over anticipating that we didn't receive last year. But we can discuss that if we are going to have another meeting.
Yeah, we should have.
My rule of thumb is typically don't always take the rosiest picture on revenue, because you don't always get it. Unless it's a really fixed number.
So you're gonna check with V L C T and then going forward, discussing the percentages for the Swenson?
Yeah, well, that'll be.
They would like to look at that as a whole package of how we're actually gonna save that money.
Yep, no, that'll be, that'll be discussion we'll be having starting at our next board meeting.
So I'm gonna, I had given Michael copies of my brainstorm as far as budget, as far as the tax rate. I'm gonna make you guys copies and then when we end up, the changing of the revenue on certain items. And then when we do meet for a meeting, we kind of are already on the same page of going forward.
Where we're at, what we need to raise.
So, yeah.
How different is the number, since I wasn't here, that we're actually raising, that we need to raise compared to what we anticipated having to raise? We needed to budget last year.
So, so last year, we raised point four six six. These are our actual numbers and we should have raised point five one six instead.
Due to less revenue.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a revenue issue that we gotta fix, okay.
Yes, and over expending for expenditures for the highway, uh, for the government.
Rough winner.
Well, no, highway is a general government.
Government where it's legal fees, it's.
So again, a lot of this, like.
Rough year for legal fees.
You had legal fees and that's, that's one of those loops on the radar.
There's an additional ten grand.
So you anticipated a tax rate with last, for this fiscal year when you did the budget of this?
For the town, yeah, for the town meeting.
So this is our actual.
Correlates pretty well to, this is what you did or should have done.
This is what we should have done last year.
See, so don't think we're not.
But this is the actual what we should be receiving. And going off from last year, this is the number that's in the town report. Estimated for raising is the, is point five six one.
Five six one, yeah.
And I get that by decreasing the revenue, not by much, so this is still hoping to receive.
If you reduce it by the revenue anticipated, we'd raise taxes for the rest of it.
So it's not a shock, people know about this amount from the town report. But are we gonna receive a hundred and sixty-nine thousand when we only received seventy-two thousand last year?
What are we anticipating to be received in this fiscal year?
A hundred and ninety-two thousand is the actual. That's after if we received a hundred and thirty-three thousand of FEMA, but of course, the, that's on the expense side also.
Right, we wouldn't spend any FEMA money if that doesn't come through.
That's a money in, money out.
Right, gotcha.
Correct.
Yep.
So there's.
That'll be a wash.
Yeah, a wash, that's the term.
So this is my way of thinking, okay, the town isn't going to be shocked about this amount. The grand list did go up.
That's good.
So that's good and, and, and we do, they still have time for their grievances. But Ron is not expecting it to change.
Oh, good.
So, by that going up.
Play a lot or just a little?
Well, from one point three oh one to.
One point three oh eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven thousand.
So.
So it's not off the charts?
Well, it's ten cents and then the education went up six cents. So you're, you're looking.
But you anticipated that ten cents.
Correct, from the last.
The voters know about that, okay, does not.
So it's, it's roughly fifteen and a half, sixteen cent increase, tax increase.
So what's our timeline?
That's what I'm trying to understand, that was the.
The grand list, when will we actually have a?
The grievances are, I believe, next week, if not this week, so within two weeks and then.
And what about?
In order to get my sixty days.
Right.
I need, they gotta go out in August, I love, you know, the first week of August. And they're due October twenty, it's last Thursday in August.
So you want?
Or sorry, October, so it'd be twenty-fourth is my due date.
So we're essentially running out of time.
It's getting close.
So, and the, so we need to, I mean, the listers need to get us a final.
And they won't until after the grievances, so by next week it should.
Okay, well, next week is the first of August.
Right.
Yeah, we have, yeah, next Thursday.
Yeah, so.
We might have to have a special meeting.
We will have to have a special meeting.
That's fine, I'll be around.
Yeah, okay.
I'm on call.
I'm thinking while we're right here all together, why don't we try to figure out?
If we did it Thursday, I know I'm not on call Thursday, but Friday through the following Thursday, I'm on call, so I could be here at good time.
So do we want to try to do this, have this special meeting August first?
I'm fine with that.
That works for me.
While we're right here, I thought, why don't we get a date?
August first.
We'll have a, we'll have a grand list by then that we can count on. Okay, so August first.
So I'm gonna make you guys copies of all these. And if you have any questions about my chicken scratch.
No, I got it, I was understanding, I always thought that the tax rate had shot up unanticipated.
No, we anticipated the ten cents.
So that's, it is, the voters voted on it.
Well, it's around a nine cents. And then the school, the education went up six cents, that gets handed to us.
We don't have a choice on that.
So do we want to start at six P, actually, it would be easier for me, I work on Thursday afternoons and I get done at four. So starting at five is sort of dual what I'm.
Five or six, or is it the toughest?
Six is fine if they.
Five, six, I don't care.
Yeah, I could be down here by ten after five.
You pick it if you get the toughest.
How about five thirty?
All right.
That'll give me a chance to have a cup of tea.
And you'll send a note out anyway, right, we gotta warn it.
Yeah, I gotta warn it, so.
So I'll get your copies before you leave today and then we'll all be on the, we can hem and ha and we can see what we can do for numbers.
Yep.
All righty.
Thank you.
Diana?
As long as all it has to do is look into that revenue picture when we do budget.
Yeah, I wanna look at it because I, I don't understand why we're, where the shortfall is.
Shouldn't be a half, we're not doing a good job if we have half.
Right.
But I had.
Huge jump to me, huh? Seems like five and six cents, four cents some years, but.
No, what I was concerned is that there was a tax increase that the voters hadn't looked at, which they did look at that ten cents. So that's really not on us, you know, that's what we proposed.
You wanna join us, Chris?
I wanna listen to that.
Easy chair.
So the main thing, I've, I've sent you guys information on this records management policy. It's something we've been putting off for a long time because it's a real bugger and it's boring and it's complicated and, but the vault was just getting too full, we had to do something. So Brandy and I studied this and we also studied one that was, similar one that was prepared for the town of Marshfield. This is based on a shell that came from the Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association. So everybody doesn't have to, you know, reinvent the wheel. So there's another copy, I didn't email you one.
You can give us, you can give us the crib note?
Yes, well, this is, this is the crib, the only thing we're happy of this. Well, the, the state has these things called record schedules and record disposition orders. And every record, I mean, everything is public record, we all know that. We don't have to keep everything forever. There's a saglas, special thing on tax assessment, there's one on accounting records, one on payroll management records, one on personnel files, one on municipal clerks, one on generally government municipalities in general. And the town of Marshfield did a really nice job looking up everything. I mean, that's, that has election materials and all kinds of stuff in there that's interesting. So we've been going through that and making changes. We discussed how many years, a lot of these things like the accounting records and stuff, they say you only have to keep them for a year after your audit's been completed. Some of them are three years after your audit's been completed. Marshfield, for some reason, decided they were gonna save everything for seven years. Brandy and I decided that five years made more sense because there's a few things on that list that are actually, have to be more than five years, very few. So it's recommended that we adopt, you know, the clerk, in this case a clerk and treasurer, since we're separate offices, adopt the policy and that we run it by you for your approval. It's not really a select board policy, it's an internal office policy.
This is all in keeping with the state of Vermont stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what all this says.
So we don't have to build the three times bigger vault.
Right, right, so we decided, for now, we're getting rid of everything back, their two thousand thirteen and back. And that leaves us fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, so. So it would be good to get that done.
That's your recommendation?
Yeah. And really?
Do you shred them or do you store them outside or burn them?
Some of them have to be shredded, some of them have to be recycled.
It lists it all out, what you can do with them, shred, shred, recycle. So this is their recommendation, I'll move that we adopt that policy. They're giving me a yes back there too.
Okay, well, here's an original, you can all sign.
So it does get tedious, I mean, anything that has a social on it is to be shredded.
Yep, and you use like a secure shred or do we have a?
We can either take it to Berry, to the recycling center, they have a shred place, sometimes I sneak, never mind.
So the older stuff, there was a lot that had socials on it.
Yeah.
So for me, in protecting my hiding, I want that stuff shredded.
I'm okay, we get secure shred to come and do that, we just get it all done at once, that's what you need.
Yeah, well, we do, we probably end up with a box or two.
Definitely don't want to do it wrong.
Yeah, but yeah, like the larger size boxes, not that, free of service.
Really?
So I currently have thirteen and back.
Boxes?
Thirteen boxes in my kitchen right now, because I don't want this stuff that has socials on it to get out.
Has anyone investigated what day gets secure shred show up or somebody like that or take it?
For one time, no, we could do, but when we do this, we usually end up with just a couple of boxes that actually have to be shredded.
Boxes now?
Yeah, but they don't all have to be shredded.
Oh, okay.
They're like select word orders.
There's, the stuff is mixed.
Pax mills and things that don't have.
So does that mean you have to go through?
Do you want to give Brandy discretion to get rid of her thirteen boxes?
Not to burn them, tell them?
You can't burn them, it's against the laws.
Town and state laws.
I feel really good about doing that, because then.
But you obviously don't want, want to waste the time or spend the time, I should say, going through it all and figuring out what.
No, we have to do.
I can go to a post office and I'll call Hardwick and if I have to go up for a couple of hours and stand there and make sure it's shredded.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it would, you know, like on OSSU, they have these big secure shred bins, they're like the size of a large.
They just drop it in.
Barrel, yeah, and then they come and pick it up. And so, you know, if we really thought that all those thirteen boxes needed to be.
No, I don't, but I do think there's pieces, we have a whole fiscal year, twelve months of select word orders and back in the day, every single table, stuff had their socials on it.
So that needs to be got rid of, so that needs to happen.
Yeah, well, I, I would recommend rather than going through it all, because that sounds like a arduous task.
And we'd be banned all of that.
Shred it all.
Shred it.
And if.
If you're discretion, I guess, right?
Company that comes and picks it up, just do that.
Yeah, we don't really have room for a secure shred bin, because, you know, we need to have at least four.
Pile and you can stay ahead of it.
Once it's shredded, have you still gotta burn it or you just throw it in the trash?
It's trash then.
It's trash then.
It can't be recycled if it's shredded.
That's odd.
They come and take it away.
Secure shred does, yeah.
So I'm not looking at the prices as well.
Yes, let's figure it out and just.
There's only one, yeah, there's only one secure shred company, I'm sure if you want to contact them, we'd have a.
Instead of having to buy one and then feed it three cases of fire.
No. We'll burn out our shredders.
Yeah, I've done that to some.
And then a shredder there and a little.
You'd be a little busy fitting three sheets at a time down in there.
All my checks, I can only retain six months. All my checks, I can only retain six months. Our checks and I have to shred them, so.
Okay.
That's what my.
Where's that piece of? Either that, one that I gave you.
I have records policies and.
This one?
This one.
I just made one of those in case anybody really is.
I was gonna use that as a case I couldn't sleep tonight.
Okay.
Like reading insurance policies and manuals.
Anything else from the town's first report?
Nothing. I haven't been trying to figure out the new title records. Stuff. We worked on this box and moving boxes quite a couple of days last week.
Shall we move on to the Woodbury store?
Please, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Still radio siphons.
Yeah, well, actually, I sent another email today. I said that this is ridiculous. And I said, if we lose our, for one thing, if we lose our contractor who has already been put off for two months, it's gonna cost a lot more or else we're gonna have to go another year. If we have another year, the building's not gonna stand.
It's not gonna make it through another year.
And it's, uh.
Did you guys see the pictures?
I saw the picture that's going in the.
Yep. Yeah, and so I was thinking.
So how do we, is there?
So I wrote that email today to Lauren and Ben Rose, her boss, and the response was that they have a meeting, a phone meeting tomorrow with FEMA in Boston.
Would it be any benefit if the select board sent something to our congressional representatives?
Well, we've discussed that.
Diane's been talking with David Yakovonin.
Well, I've decided to start with our state reps to, well, actually, what I asked them was what's the best way to get to, um, our Washington reps. We kind of agreed that before we get there, if we could be best if they could help push things along. So David and has had some emails back and forth with Ben Rose and Lauren. And, because, you know, to bring in Washington and have them calling Boston, you know, that kind of stuff is not always successful.
It's gonna fall down before they get anything. And it's already falling into the.
Because it was on their fast track.
Yeah, right.
They want to get this done.
What point do we pull out of this and just do it? I don't know.
No.
That's the question. We don't own it.
They can't do it on their own.
Well, then they go after Kirk and make him get it to us.
Well, where I was going with this is it sounds like we need to be putting pressure on them.
She, yeah.
We try the nice route for a couple of weeks and then go right to the.
Because this is, yeah, it's ridiculous.
It is.
Because we're getting to the summer if it takes a phone call to Leahy and Sanders and say, hey, will you check in and see what the problem is here? Because my understanding is everything's done. We're just waiting for them to.
Right.
Write the check.
Yeah, just say, go for it.
Give us the, well, they don't even have to write the check yet. They just have to.
Tell us it's done.
Give us the approval.
Because somebody's gonna be in the brook looking at the pictures.
So anyways, tomorrow, there'll be something tomorrow.
That's kind of what I thought that was gonna look like.
Yeah, and they said when stuff starts falling into the brook and coming out the other side, then something's gonna happen.
Well, if that starts happening, then it goes beyond, then the state would get involved.
Is there stuff falling out of the building going into the brook?
Would.
Would.
Or.
And whatever else is in the wood, you know, they say there's contamination out there.
Not in the wood. Contamination is limited to a couple areas of linoleum tile, two sinks that have asbestos undercoating and some asbestos and vermiculite up in the half of the, of the, what do you call it, door.
That's the original part, the original building.
That's vermiculite, yes.
So it gets closer and closer to imploding into the waterway. I said, when you get underneath to take a look at it, I don't know what we're gonna find, but.
I'll do that this week. I'll get my wet suit on and go.
Well, Chris has done it.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, I want to, if there's stuff in there, I want to get it out of there. I mean, as far as branches and stuff, so if we have another heavy water.
Yeah, you can't do that. It's coming down. It might, it might come down on you.
Well, I'm not gonna pull on the building.
Well, did you see those pictures?
I didn't understand quite where those pictures were taken. Did you go through the culvert?
So from my house, I went down the brook.
Yeah.
And ju- just barely under the storm.
Right where that little beam, steel beam is.
Yeah.
The steel beam, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so that's where that picture was taken.
Yeah, it's 20 feet under the building maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you contacted the Department of Commerce and Community?
About pushing on FEMA?
Because if you had neighbors take that picture and contacted them and persistent about it, they would think, they would be there. So especially since their waterway is involved.
Say, say the name of that agency.
The State of Vermont's Agency of Commerce and Community Development. They're in charge of like landlords and property owners who.
They're just at the point where FEMA just needs to bless the thing and move.
Right, yeah, we've already gone through these other agencies and they weren't even helped, so.
You've already done this, something like this?
We talked about that at the beginning.
Okay.
And we decided not to go that way. So we're kind of tied to FEMA now. If we have, you know, if, uh, other.
It sounds like Robles is where, like, if you're in Washington involved, I don't know.
If we don't get anything, if they don't get anywhere tomorrow, that'll be our next step.
Okay, I'm okay with doing that.
Yeah, whatever it takes.
I'd really like to get this done in the summer. Sounds like you would like to hit it in the summer. We keep getting flooded, you keep getting flooded.
Yeah, it's getting expensive.
They tore up the parking lot, which is a top, still trading.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, let's just see what happens tomorrow, I guess. And if nothing happens, then we've got to, we've got to start.
Ratcheted up, whatever that is.
Screaming in somebody's face.
Chris, you want to say anything else?
I'd just like to know if there's anything I can do to help the process along, if I can be a squeaky wheel and somebody's here.
Senator, too.
I can write letters. So any advisement from the select board that you think would help the situation?
I think we're at the point to.
Yeah, anything. Is that taking pictures underneath there and sending them to whoever, but.
Because we're just trying to push FEMA, like you said, I've worked with FEMA too and the squeaky wheel gets the grease. We need to make enough noise that they're gonna.
I don't want to get people involved. It'll sidetrack the FEMA project.
Yeah, I think our federal reps, congressional reps is where to go. If you're gonna write, I may actually write from the fire department side, too.
Send them the pictures that you've taken.
Right, we're all set to go. It's just your people down in Boston are taking the sweet time. They'll let us know in December, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if, you know, the building is falling into the brook and it's floating away, I mean, this, uh, at that point, the state would get involved because it's going beyond the property line. So, you know, that's another avenue.
Well, you know where those pictures with the building stuff falling in, is that enough to?
Has to go beyond the property line. That's what I was told.
That's just something.
So as soon as it's loose pieces of wood in the water, imaginable.
Like if there are any two by fours down behind your garage or something, then.
Brian's gotta throw down ones.
But even then, even then, I wouldn't rely on the state to give us any more help.
Right.
No, no.
Well, I was, originally, I was told that if it goes beyond the property line, then it does become a state issue and.
Yeah, we know how they're good at enforcing, right?
Right. Yeah, so who knows if that.
I think our best.
I mean, there was, in his picture, there was one piece of like foam board or something, but I don't know if that's really hazardous waste.
I just, I work for the state. I know if you call and start making trouble, that usually moves everything up the line, so.
Really?
Yes, it does.
Whoa.
Especially if you're a select board member or something like that. No, that does.
It's just how it works because the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Yeah, all the governor's office.
Usually if the governor's office calls, I've had Leahy's office call me before and say, when are you gonna get to this? It's like, usually the order comes down today. So when we're gonna get to it.
Well, let's hope that something happens tomorrow, at least.
Yeah.
And if they just are continuing being wishy washy, then we've got to.
We've got to do more.
Yeah, because we can't wait another year for this. It's gotta be done.
I think it'll be down this winter and at least that part will be in the brook and we'll be digging it out just to get the brook open.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, let's move on to the town highway report. I can save the conflict of interest policy thing. We could do that afterwards. That's pretty short in brief. Basically, just want to report on my conversation.
Thank you, Chris.
So, um, Richard, you wanted to talk about the north road.
Yes, I'm here representing my parents, Winona Annings, and a few of the cottage owners on East Long. There are some sections of the north road with the heavy rains that we've had here that have washed pretty considerably. And if you drive on the road with a Honda like my mom does or my sisters do, and one of my sisters had, has had to replace a muffler.
Dragon bottom.
Yeah.
Is this the class three part of it or the class four?
Class four.
Um, yeah, it's class four.
That's class four from.
For the bottom of the.
It's class three down to the bottom of that first hill where there's a turnaround, big logging land.
It's like right when you start going up there, that's off. And then when you get on the flat part where all the cedar trees are, there are like potholes that you can't avoid. Like, it's, yeah, I mean, my, if I have a SUV, Lexus SUV, it's no problem. But anybody with a Honda, regular car, it's an issue. And we would just like, I know it's a, you know, a lower class road, but, you know, even if they could just dump a couple loads of gravel and people, you know, would gladly help, you know, spread it, just so that we don't have these issues.
They did deliver two loads of gravel to your father.
Yeah.
And they have.
That's on the south camp. That's the right road.
Yeah, and then they, they have delivered gravel in the past and there's a crew there that does the spreading out.
Spreading, so.
So, um.
Will they do a dump at rate at the end of the class three or the beginning of the class four?
Um, no, they go in a little further. They have gone a little further. I know, like, delivering the gravel to the south road, Greg Parkers actually did the delivery because he was worried about the others doing it and one of the plow mounts got bent hitting a grain of boulder. So we're not gonna do that again. But, yeah, usually it's dumped along the road.
Jason Hunt and I worked all weekend on that and that road is much wider now. And, yeah, it's back to where it used to be.
In there and get as far as you can.
That's what we've done in the past. There've been people that have come in and asked for gravel and then they do the work. And, you know, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, and I have some pictures here that show that it has washed pretty considerably here, scrubbing through them.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like they could get in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that hill right, right past.
Right past.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's hill, kind of levels and it's hill again, and then you start going around where all the potholes are.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
So, so you and whoever else would be doing the work, do you just want gravel or are you asking for the grader to grader?
No, no, I don't, because I, no, because I've, my uncle, um, who was down road manager for many years, was always saying, we can't get the grader in there. We gotta, you know.
Right.
And Jason will gladly use, he has like a job here.
Tractor with so he can.
With a plow and a scraper, yeah.
Yep, okay. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's not an issue.
Yeah, we don't want to cause, we like, we know it's a lower class road. We don't want any, you know, maintenance issues to come up by using a piece of equipment that shouldn't be there, so, yeah.
So if they were to dump the gravel at the turnaround log landing or would you further it on?
Probably the, probably the best area is on the top. Greg, when you turn left, kinda, you know, where the road used to go up and over where there's logging? Like up in there, because then you could haul it down and then haul it on the level part where all the.
So pretty much at the peak of that, that first hill.
Yeah, and there's plenty of room to drive up in there.
And turn around.
It's just all, yeah, it's just all grown up because it's all raspberry bushes now.
Can you open there with a 10 wheeler or will you do the small truck?
I guess I'd let Greg make that decision.
Yeah, if you've got the low pro, you could bring a couple of small loads further down the road and just do two or three trips if you had.
That's a pretty narrow road.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Or they've got the older six wheeler, which will hold 16 yards.
Except that's, has the chloride.
Well, has the chloride tank on the back, yeah.
Okay, um, so I guess what I'll do is I'll mention this to Greg Parkers. I wrote for him and he'll go take a look at it. And he'll let me know and I'll get, I could either call your dad. I have his phone number. I could call you.
Just leave a message out of there, so.
Okay.
If they're not there that much because they're always very late.
They can't, right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so that's not a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Should happen this week, probably?
Uh, I don't see why not, but I'm not sure what they have scheduled for this week. How, do you have a sense of how many loads you would need based on?
Um.
Or should I like Greg?
I prob, um, the hill part probably is gonna need a good two.
Okay.
Because it has washed considerably.
It's a big red save.
And then probably just one for where the potholes are.
Okay.
You said Greg will drive up and look at it.
Yeah, he'll check it out.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the old Cory Road. Coleman and Chuck, come on in.
I've been summoned.
Somewhere in here.
Should've brought you a check. I didn't bring you a check. Don't see today. Thank you for bringing that.
No problem.
Chuck? Did I make copies of this? Would that be helpful?
I have one.
You have one?
I didn't bring it, but I have one.
You don't have one, Chuck, and Coleman doesn't have one. I'll make a couple.
Yeah, I'll take it if you're gonna make it.
Okay, I'll make, yeah, yeah. So this is a copy of the, um, the agreement. As it's, it's still a draft, uncompleted yet. So it looks like Brandy has. And polygonated one.
It's in there, alright.
So, um, just refer to this. But I know the issue at the moment with Coleman here is the reimbursement for what he has paid Chuck for work on the road. And while we're all here, it would be good just to look at the agreement. Rick Baron has seen it and has approved it. There's a couple of things, eight and nine in the agreement. Chuck and I have been trading phone messages discussing part nine. And I can share with you or Chuck can share with you what he's thinking about his work on the town, the part of the road that the town has agreed to have him work on. Then we need to figure out, come to an agreement with Coleman about the work that's already been done on the road that he's paid Chuck for. So that's can be part of the discussion. I think I sent this to you guys earlier, just to, especially you, Paul, to get a, have a sense of whether I got everything down.
Yeah, Rick seemed like he was happy with it.
Yeah, Rick, Rick was okay with it. So, um, so Coleman, can you share with us, um, you know, and Chuck can, can help, help you with that? What you've paid Chuck, what you've had him do? You know, is the work already done? I assume that it is. And what you would like to have the town, how you would like to have the town reimburse you or how much you would like to be reimbursed, just to get a sense of what you're thinking. And then we can tell you, share our opinions on all of that. Do you have anything?
I'm not sure actually how it came up, but it seemed like it wasn't my idea. It seemed like it was somebody else's at the meeting that put something forth. So I wanted to, I didn't realize that you guys wanted to put any time and effort into the road because of the other thing. Because I would've just laid back. I wouldn't have hired Chuck for that sense. Because I waited for you guys to do it. But, you know, Jezebel was whining and I wanted to help her. And of course, I would really like that road to be like a class three road. And I actually spoke with you about that, right? Because I thought that anybody, whether it's me, anybody who wanted to put $500,000 into the road or 50,000 more, they could do that, but you said I couldn't.
You, people have done that and there have been roads here in Woodbury that used to be class four that have been upgraded to class. You, people have done that and there have been roads here in Woodbury that used to be class four that have been upgraded to class three, but they didn't just do it without getting the town's permission, usually it was.
Possibility that the town would, would disagree to that?
Um, there is a good possibility that the town would and there also might, was probably an even better possibility that other people along the road might disagree with that, I can, I'm thinking that the barons would probably not want to have that be a class three road.
They may not, but it is a public right of way, if I wanted to string power lines up the road because I needed power.
You'd have to get an easement for that.
No, the town has an easement, I'm pretty sure I know these facts, but I'm.
Well, the electric company usually, um, has an easement for their power lines.
It's a public right of way because the town of Woodbury owns this public right of way.
The public right of way is the road itself and then about, you know, I think it's twenty, yeah, three rods out from the center line of the road.
Three rods out from the center line.
It's a total of three rods, it's a public right of way.
So, roughly twenty-five feet from the center line.
So, it's just under fifty?
No.
Fifty feet.
I once had this situation at the Greensboro where, you know, they wanted to string the power lines out in this field. But, you know, the land owner didn't want to do that, but there was a bunch of beautiful maple trees, you know, gigantic maple trees right next to the road. And that was the only other option, the power company was gonna do this, take those beautiful maple trees out and then finally they said, okay, we're going out. Because I don't think you can deny somebody.
Yeah, I don't know the particulars of that, but I, you know.
Anyway, they put way out.
But those are parallel.
We're off what we were discussing, I don't know, I'm not an expert on that.
Yeah, let's not, we're talking about the road, not the power lines.
I was shocked when you said I couldn't, you know, put money into the road.
You, you can, but you have to get permission.
Come and ask you.
You have to get, because it's, it's town property, it's like, you wouldn't go out into the baron's field and, and start digging a pit, so.
No.
You know, the town, that road is town property, so, and you would have to come to the town and ask permission to do something to the road. And, you know, like, there are two class four roads this summer that have been upgraded a little bit, um, by different logging companies, but they have asked the town, um, permission to do that and, you know, Greg Parkers has gone and looked and, and heard their proposals and, and basically they've been giving, giving permission.
Specs on what they think they do.
Right, but you gotta have, what you gotta do or whatever, right.
So, cause that, cause that's not, that's not your property, that's town property, so, but the town usually is more than happy to have someone fix up a road.
Yeah, at their expense.
At their expense, right.
That's the asking, otherwise my land is not valued at any kind of development, it would just be woodland or scrub land or something like that, right? But that was the main town road to the cap in the old days.
And as I explained to you in our phone conversation, if you, if you or other property owners along the road wanted it to be a class three road, then there's a whole process with a series of steps.
Public hearings.
Designated by state statute on how to reclassify a road, it's a pretty elaborate process. And if there are people that object, then, then there's this kind of debate that goes back and forth in a public hearing and then the select board as a judicial body would make a decision on whether to reclassify.
Be appealed by.
Which could then be appealed by whoever objected to it. So, it's a pretty elaborate process, but there is a process, um, to do that and if that's something that you wanted to pursue or other people along that road wanted to pursue, then, um, you know, you, again, you would come and request that, that that be considered and the select board would take it up.
Probably have a public hearing.
Oh, there, there has to be a public hearing, that's part of the process. So, that is an avenue that, um, that you can pursue or any of the other property owners that, who wanted to could pursue for that road.
There's nothing I want to pursue, but, um.
Okay, well, that's, that's what would have to happen if, if somebody did or if you do.
Now, as far as Coleman just wanting to repair the road and put in some ditches, would that, would just be coming down here and asking us?
Yes.
We would send Greg up to look at and Greg would tell you what the specs are that you need to adhere to.
And then we would just agree like we did, particularly since the neighbors don't all agree and.
Right.
That's why it's a good agreement, solve the problem.
Well, this is a little bit news to me, because I, I think I've been down here talking to some select people many years and it wasn't quite as strict as you're describing, but that's fine, that's fine, I understand completely, cause things get more strict all the time and more regulated.
It's true, but I think these statutes on working on, you know, a class four road, I think those have been set for quite a while. But, you know, beyond my knowledge, I don't know when they were, when they were established.
It might've been him just going to see Rick Brown and Rick saying, yeah, go ahead and do it or something, you know, maybe. I don't know that you have to have a public hearing if it's.
Not, not to work on, not to work on the road.
Our discretion.
But you do have to get permission from the town, that's what I'm saying.
What if I wanted to build a house in the middle of the road?
It's town property.
They got away with that middle section on class four road and boy, there were lawsuits up the name.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We really want to avoid that.
No more losses.
We were just titled.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah.
What if I wanted to build a road as a development and I wanted the town to take it over when I built it to specs, would you?
They would put your petition as for it.
Same thing, it's the same process, if it's, if it's on the town road, it would have to be that process.
If you wanted it to become, if you built it yourself on your property and you wanted it to become a town road, then you would come, you'd have to come before the select board and, and then I don't, I'm not sure if there's any special process beyond it or not, I haven't had to deal with that.
My neighbor, my neighbor in East Montpelier built a four hundred thousand dollar road. And there it sits with the power and the subdivision and everything and he wants like two hundred thousand dollars a lot for, you know, for three acre lots that are really only worth seventy, but maybe a little more.
It'll sit for a while.
Yeah.
It's sitting, but, um, you know, and it's not a town road either, but I, I'm wondering, I thought that he got, that the town agreed. He built it to these very sophisticated specs, it's like Route eighty-nine.
It could be the town did agree, but yeah, I imagine he would've had that discussion before he did the work.
It sounds like a subdivision and there's rules for all that stuff.
And, and, but you have, maybe he already has the permit.
I don't know.
Anyway.
So.
I will, uh, be happy with whatever you guys want to contribute to my contribution to the road.
Okay, and my understanding is.
I also own part of the road, but you don't.
You do? Part of the old quarry road, you own a part of it?
Well, not what I consider to be the old quarry road, but, um.
So, is there a section of road, um, that you have where you've basically, there's an old quarry road, an old part of that road that would be on the town, but you've made a different part of the road that's been used by the, whoever uses that road?
Yes, it has been used.
Okay, cause that's a similar situation up, um, on the backside of East Long, there's a part of the north road that most people think that there's a section of the north road that is a north road because it's been used by the public for.
But that's not.
Fifty years, but the actual road is, is a unused.
Straightway that just goes straight. Yeah, I wonder why, if there was some logger wind around there?
Yeah, actually, I assume, I mean, this, it's always been a road since I was a kid, um, and I assume that E.B. Hyde.
Complaining about it, is somebody complaining about the use of the new part of the road?
Uh, yeah, it came up when a logger basically, um, trashed both roads, um, hauling logs on the roads. And that, that's when I became aware of the fact that part of that road is not.
Where it's supposed to be.
Town road, right, and the part that is supposed to be is like, you hardly even know it's a road anymore, but that's the town road. Somebody has it cabled off, that's illegal also, um, so, yeah, so, so you actually built.
I, I had to buy land from Dennis Ainsworth because we were going to come off.
This is where the road splits at the end?
Yeah, there's actually three ways you can go, if you come up the road and then the original road just keeps on going straight into the pocket bush, the, oh, the, the road that ran, that was the original access to the quarry, the entrance to the quarry, when the caper road wasn't there. And I think you can still see it.
Okay, and that's probably.
That, you can even see that hardly now.
That's the town road?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
That Dennis Ainsworth said was not the town road, but he owned that. And that's where we wanted to, I wanted to access the caper road from there. And Dennis said, no, you can't, you can access it because everybody's been using it by adverse possession and there's another name for municipality, right, I can't remember what that term is.
I've heard, yeah, I can't remember the terms.
But he said, we couldn't fix it, do you remember those plots?
I remember, it was a number of years, I remember the road went, you can see where the road kinda goes at an angle, then the new road turns sharp and it goes up. There was a, a meeting years ago about that, I remember.
Yeah, well, I had to buy that land in order to get that to happen because, um, not only did Dennis say.
So, are we saying that that piece of that is not a town road?
Well, it, it will be.
But that's not part of.
If we just keep using, you guys just keep using it.
That's right, we did, we put in a new road down below it, which is the road now.
Yeah, and, and I, we were up there planning the other way, which would've been an awful turn out at the corner where people go too fast and all of a sudden that some power company comes along and they cut all those brush and trees and I'm like, wow, that'd be perfect over there. And maybe that was after I had to buy this land from Dennis.
That, that sounds like another issue beyond the one that we're talking about tonight.
Okay, let's just talk about these.
Yeah, so let's, let's stay focused on that, but that's something it sounds like we better, we should look into.
Yeah, cause if, if the town has a right of way through there, that's where the road ought to be. It sounds like it was disputed at one point in time.
It's a terrible place for the road to be, you, you can go look at it.
I, maybe at some point you could show us or.
Are we saying that the road where it is is where it's supposed to be or not where it's supposed to be?
It's not where it was originally.
Right, I know it's not, but I know that was disputed though. And this was how it was resolved.
So.
Well, you just said Ainsworth wouldn't let you put the road over there where it's supposed to be.
Well, he, he wasn't denying the use of the road as it had been, but, you know, I needed to build it up and make a, a place where a car could come up and turn left or go.
Flat.
Or flat, you know, and it just, it was very difficult, it's very steep there and it was a bad place to do this. Even it seemed like at its best, it was gonna be awful.
So, it sounds like that may need to be resolved where official right of way is.
Yeah, that's another issue for another time, but maybe try to do it.
I didn't realize that wasn't officially resolved.
So, um, as far as reimbursing you for the work that you have done on the old quarry road, um, you know, my original thinking was to maybe try to work out a fifty-fifty deal with you, to, the town would pay half and then you would pay the other, cause technically you did the work without the town even knowing you were doing it, um, so, um.
Well, well, that's a slight point, knowing we were doing it, cause I talked to Greg for it.
But he's not the select board.
Right, but the town.
He's an employee of the town.
Right, but I, uh, I went to him and he said he didn't see any problems, so I wanted to work.
Of course, at that point in time, he wasn't anticipating any costs back to the town.
Right.
Or problems on this lower end, or I mean, it was gonna be.
Or another property owner.
Yeah.
So Greg gave you some specs to do whatever you were doing too?
There really wasn't anything for specs, I told him I was just gonna fix the ruts and put some water barriers in get the water to wear the road anywhere, I could find a hole for it. And he, he did, it was a good idea and the day we were up there and met, he told me that when I, if I go back out to what they make them water barriers a little deeper, not deep enough. But I was listening to the girl that lives down in there with a little Volkswagen and.
Too deep for her already?
Too deep for her.
I think Greg was talking more about the, the turnouts just in the right of way beyond, you know, beyond the drivable part of the road so that if erosion or gravel doesn't fill those up as quickly or there's more space to.
Well, there was a couple of them I left pretty shallow and the rain that we had, I don't know if it was Saturday night or it wasn't raining, but, um, there's a couple of them that weren't deep enough.
Okay.
I mean, they're still working, but.
Right.
Two, three more rainstorms and that'd be gone. But that's just a matter of a few minutes.
So, that's, that's my thinking on the reimbursement to Coleman, if you guys.
Do you have any bills?
I just signed Chuck's check because I forgot to sign it when I sent it to him.
That was for, that was for two thousand dollars?
Nineteen fifty.
Nineteen, well, okay.
So, we probably should discuss this executive session or something first or?
I don't think we need to.
Don't need to?
We could if you would like.
I'd vote no myself, just because he didn't ask ahead of time. I think we could get inundated with people that go work on a class four road to live out there and we may all of a sudden have a bunch of people coming in with bills for roads.
And I'm leaning the same direction, I just concerned if we start doing that, then, nothing against you personally, it's just, if somebody decides to go out and start working on a road.
We need an agreement ahead of time before.
Cause you could get a lot of expenses built up prior to that.
So, how does that sit with you Coleman? Probably not too good.
Probably not too good.
Look, I'm gonna build a barricade up there and see how long that lasts.
We can talk it over again, you know, amongst ourselves, but, you know, that's what my felt, feeling is, is we got a lot of class fours in this town and I'm afraid we're gonna have people coming in all the time with bills where they've done a little work on their property and, and either we need to come up with a policy on how this is gonna work.
And that's my only concern though, that it's just to figure out so you know what you get into beforehand.
Yeah, cause this does surprise anyone if we do it.
Now, is there any other work on the part of the road that is pretty much Coleman's, well, property butts on both sides that is, you'll be doing, there's one, isn't, wasn't there a catch basin that was discussed?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like.
It's a long, it's a, one long cutoff up there, we wanted to clean that, the gravel out of, just below you, where the culvert is, that culvert that Greg gave you was up on the hill there, just for all that, that long cutout. I cleaned that and Greg said it should be deeper.
So, again, my understanding was moving forward, the, uh, we were paying for the work on the road.
Yes.
Right, so, you shouldn't have any more.
But wasn't there, wasn't there turnout with a catch basin above the baron's logging road that is still on Coleman's property that we discussed?
Yeah, the fir, that first catch basin is gonna be right on the corner.
So, so the town would be paying Chuck.
To do that work, yeah.
And that's right at, right at the property line of your property and the baron's, it's on your property.
Place to put a log road in.
Yeah, where you, where you had wanted to put in a logging road too, um, so the town would be covering that part.
But I definitely don't want to cover anything.
Right, right, the town would be paying for that.
I'm glad you're gonna want to do that.
Right.
Especially if it's your idea.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, yeah, yeah, be doing work for us. Hiring for a specific project, that would work better, safer.
So, we'll discuss this a little bit more, um, maybe.
Can we get a copy of the bill?
Uh, actually, I have one, I have my copy out of the truck if you want it.
So we had something to look at.
It's a one liner, isn't it?
One liner?
No, I think I put down the hours for it.
How much land have you got left up there Coleman?
Hard to, hard to say because, uh, nothing up there, um, that I own anymore is surveyed, I don't think. Old Russell Demming surveyed, um.
Is it broken into lots or just one big lot?
Well, um, it depends on how you, I mean, nobody's been up there surveying.
Right, it's not subdivided there.
I had an aerial survey and there was a surveyor that was working for me when I was selling to the barons and, and I asked him to make these lines and do some work, but it was all like sort of aerial, you know, like there was nothing. But of my original, not my original purchase in Woodbury, but the farm that was the Fair Farm, which originally I bought from. which originally I bought from Marty Singer is 117 acres. You know, I bought it from Donald Vargo, he bought it from Marty Singer and he bought it from Peter Meyer. And Peter Meyer and Russell Demming went out there and they did some sort of rough compass survey with no-
Gotcha, so that's why you kinda don't know, yeah.
Like after three owners, the town comes in and does some sort of aerial reappraisal and they decided I only had 112 acres.
That's left after you sold to the Barrens?
Five gone out of thin air. But, you know, I didn't argue, I didn't argue because I wasn't sure where the boundaries go way out there. I kinda think I know where my boundaries are out, but you know.
Get where the coffee machine is.
Yeah. When I bought the first piece, I could have bought what the town was saying was 57 acres and they were taxing Harold Fair, I think, 57 acres. And then Jules Chateau and Martha Corcoran for 57 acres. But after they had Tru Line surveyors come, it was 96 acres. And that's what I bought. 96 acres, but I could have bought it as 57. So anyway, there are some errors in the, I think those things just aren't that accurate.
Gotcha.
So we'll, we'll probably go into executive session at the end of this meeting. It's not worn, but I think we can do that.
If we can, we do it next week.
Well, you know, I heard what everybody said and that all makes sense to me.
Okay.
But, you know.
So we have had people come to us and ask to upgrade a road and stuff like that.
Right, and usually we say yes.
Yeah.
And it's important just to speak-
At least in my, my time, my history.
And to speak for me, it's important that the road be usable for you to get to your property. So when you have an issue and it's not usable, then-
It is a class four, we talked to Greg and we talked about-
Right, just let us know, 'cause we worried about the erosion, 'cause I guess that was a big problem on Rick's that I didn't know. And we're worried that property, for me, it's important that if property owners have access to their property. So if it's not working-
Well, I could have approached this in a bunch of different ways.
Yeah, gotcha.
I've been meaning to ask Chuck if, you know, I thought he lived down at the bottom of the road and he didn't.
Close. So it's just if it gets bad again, just let us know.
Yeah, it's a tough place because water runs downhill and-
And we've got a good plan, I think if we're, if we maintain what we're gonna do-
That's key.
It will, if we don't maintain what we're gonna do, we're wasting our money. I'm not in favor of doing that, we've got to maintain.
Now, have you talked to Greg to make sure he's-
Greg was at the, he was at the meeting.
We've got to maintain this. You know, we don't want these roads that are unusable and wash and gravel all over the place.
That the town will maintain the work that's done.
Yeah, however we do that, he needs to come to us and say, I need to hire some of this work done.
He needs to check it out regularly just for that.
Right, or if there's an issue, someone needs to let us know.
Coleman or somebody should let us know.
It should be on a schedule, like to look at. Yeah, but those water barriers should be cleaned every fall, after the leaf fall.
It's really important, we've already spent money on this road, that we maintain it.
Yeah, and we probably will have to do some more upgrades to it if we're gonna maintain it.
We're looking at our plan long-term, where all we got from our road inventory, we've gotta fix, this is a step toward fixing it. If we don't wanna fix it and let it go bad, then we gotta fix it again.
We've been doing that for quite a few years.
Understood, yeah.
And you put a lot of money into it once and it all washed out.
You are preaching to the choir here, but once we get it where it should be, then we need to maintain it, that's really important to me.
I don't think it's there.
Not there yet?
No, it will be, that's what our plan is.
Yeah, it's not a ledge up through there, it's a tough road, it either needs to be built up another, what, a couple feet or something?
Well, yeah. I just think you need to, there's just a couple of water bars that-
Well, that's what I, we've got-
That road stayed put for 20 years, I don't think, I don't know who did anything to it.
I think the plan we put together will work, you agree, I think.
Oh, yeah, that'll work.
It should work as long as we maintain it.
If we maintain it, it'll work good, it'll work good for a long year.
I know when you don't maintain what we got, it's just gonna tear it up again.
Yeah.
Have you talked to Greg about that as far as being on a regular cycle?
The only way we're ever gonna catch up is we gotta stay on it.
He was there, so.
All right, well, it sounds like you guys have it under control here. I'm gonna head out.
Thank you, Coleman.
Thanks, Coleman.
Have a good night.
So Chuck shared with me that, you know, for his part of working on the rest of the road that's gonna be paid for by the town, he's figuring that be a couple days, maybe a little less, and if it's two days, his rate would be, it would be $1,300 that he charges for the rest of it. If it's less than two days, it would be a little bit less.
That's just to do some ditching?
Water barriers, a couple culverts, what's on our list here?
Yeah, a couple culverts, the culvert across the road-
And this is with the town providing culverts and gravel?
And material, yeah, so town would provide all of the material, it would provide the two culverts.
So we're changing that culvert that's plugged up there?
We're changing the culvert, we aren't changing the culvert that, with the Barren's logging road. We're just, we are unplugging that one.
So are they gonna run the water truck up there and blow it out?
They could do that, yeah, the town, Greg, the road crew has a system with, to blow it out with water.
So you dig out the ends, I guess so.
They could do that part. And then the culvert that goes across the road is gonna be changed, it's gonna be, I think it's a 12-inch culvert now, it's gonna be changed to an 18-inch culvert. And they're gonna raise it up a little bit.
It's gonna help you raise it up, 'cause I can't dig down there.
Right, it's all ledge.
Yeah, so it's gonna be raised up and then we'll be putting some three-inch stone over it that would probably hold up a little bit better than-
Is there a timeline for those guys to do that?
There's no timeline, Chuck, we know when Chuck can get to it.
You were gonna draw the gravel with your truck and the town's paying for that still?
Yeah, that, that two days should take care of it.
Sounds like a plan to me.
So what I would do is I'm gonna change part eight and state what the agreement is and we'll have a sense of that at the end of our meeting. And then I'm gonna put in part nine, work done on a road that busts the Barren's property by Chuck Batchelor shall be paid for the town to no more than $1,300, does that sound okay? Or what would you feel comfortable having?
I'll tell you better after I talk to Greg tomorrow and see what he says for changes.
Okay, so let's say, okay.
'Cause I'm pretty sure we talked about putting two catch basins in down below that culvert.
We did, with stone and everything, we did.
And that's not figured in there.
Okay, so that's missing, so that's the thing I've been trying to get, is a sense of, did I leave anything out on this? So we've got the catch, I've got the catch basin above the Barren's logging road. And then I've got the, I've got the catch basin at the end of the culvert, but I don't have the catch basin by the pond.
Right, we got the line two, so we need one down below that 18-inch culvert where it heads toward the pond.
It was about halfway down, Greg and I talked about putting one on each side of the road, small. So we can put water barriers in and get the water off the road below the road.
Correct, so it sounds like we need to adjust his price in the work.
Whatever you wanna do, I-
Okay, so you were saying $1,300 for two days' work, so if I were to put in at a rate of $650 per day?
For the town, I figured I'd do it for eighty bucks an hour, I'd say.
Okay, so should I put, put that in?
Sure, eighty bucks an hour, yeah.
'Cause I think we need to work till that's, we're done.
Yeah, right, of course.
Yeah, you're wasting your money.
Yeah, you want to shoot yourself before that.
Why do half of it? So then, and then I need to add another part for the catch basin further down. See, so I've got the catch basin at the end of the new 18-inch culvert, that's here. And then there were a couple small catch basins further down the road.
We leveled off down before it went, it went down over the bank into that catch basin and the pond.
Okay, all right, okay, so add another part.
I remember you were talking on one time, there was a bunch of gravel in the field, has that been cleaned out yet?
Yes, we've decided to leave it.
That's gonna stay.
Yeah, that never, I always thought that got cleaned out, that was back when-
But it's all seeded and it's-
It's all grown up to grass.
It's vegetation.
It's staying, if we dig it, we're gonna cause more.
Yeah, you're gonna be up there hydroseeding it every time you're ready.
It's staying put right now.
And Rick Barren agreed to that, he'll go and find that. Okay, so I will, I will grill Greg Parkers about those other two. Were you gonna try to meet with him in the next day or two to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got some stuff going on tomorrow, I moved my excavator up there today, so my excavator's up there, so. It'll be, it may not be tomorrow, but probably Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah, I would suggest that you and Greg go over it once again.
You need anything for materials or culverts, make sure they're up there.
Yeah, well, Chuck is gonna haul the materials in his own truck, 'cause the, and then the culverts, yeah, we'll get them up there, whatever we're gonna need for-
Where's the second culvert going?
Well, there's the, the culvert, you know the Barren's logging road?
Yes.
That culvert that goes underneath that, that's the one that's plugged and that'll, and then the old culvert that's being replaced, in the agreement, we said that if Coleman needed it further up the road-
Up higher, you thought there might be a spot for it?
It's his to keep.
Okay, well, there is a spot up above that it could use a culvert.
So if you, if you think it can be up there, then go in and install it up there.
It can.
And I guess the town would pay for your time putting in that. If it would, if it would help the road-
It'll definitely help the road a lot.
Okay, if it would help the road, use, use that old culvert up the road.
As long as it's not destroyed when you get it out.
No, no, it's in good shape.
Yeah, it's all right, well, I saw it.
Okay, all right.
And, okay, so it's probably, it's probably gonna run a little over two days.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Probably it'll be-
That's okay.
Eighty bucks an hour.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I have a list of hours per day.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good, perfect. So I'll have you meet with Greg one more time and then I'm gonna sit down-
I'm gonna hunt him up in the morning.
Okay, and I'll, I'll sit down with him and we'll go through this and make sure everything is on it, send it back out again, including to Rick. And then we'll try to do, it'd be great if we could have this pretty much completed by the end of the week so that you can get to, get to work on it.
Yeah.
What we'd like to do is have this thing complete to what the work is, have everybody see it, everybody agree to it and sign it so that we have a written document, so there isn't any after the fact. Somebody didn't do what they, you know, so we're all covered, you, the town.
Well, I can, I've got other stuff to do.
Okay.
So if it's gonna be a few days, I'll probably move my excavator out.
Okay.
Until you get this lined up and then we'll-
I would like to have this done by the end of the week.
So we don't end up with a, no, it's not what we said.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said, she said, no.
Yeah, I don't want any of that.
And judging by the situation, that's what we need to-
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's for all parties involved.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's, everybody's on board.
All right.
Okay, so we're getting there.
Thank you, Chuck.
No problem.
I promise to move quicker than FEMA.
Yeah, you will, it won't be seven years from now.
All right, well, if you need it, then give me a number.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll be back.
You too.
All right, so do you, we could talk about village paving, that's kind of next on the-
So village paving, did you, is there someone at this, I need a spec. Sent you an email, I don't know if you had something you could share that I could, that's all, I've got this thing done for an RFP.
Okay.
I'm not positive we'd be able to get it done this year, but I'd like to finish it and send it out and you might get someone that'll do it at the end of the year.
I don't remember who did the Cabot Road the last time, do you?
Pike did the Cabot Road and-
So they should have the specs for it down there.
Well, yeah, except we did, that was, those are like super duper-
Yeah, that was for the heavy truck specs. And looking at parking lot specs, you've got a, whether it's a regular parking lot or one that is like in front of the firehouse, you're gonna need to beef up that pavement for truck specs.
Yeah.
'Cause trucks are going there routinely.
Yeah, I'd like to have the specs be somewhat heavy duty, you know, look like there was one inch kind of driveway.
Yeah, so it needs to be a little heavier than what-
Just a lot of trucks pull in there.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, and we have the fire trucks.
So I don't know who to get that from, if Shawna or someone at the state could help me or-
She might be able to, I could-
'Cause I could have it ready for the next meeting to get ready to send out, like, 'cause it's all done with just the dates not filled in.
Or any of the-
Other than the pavement specs.
Or any of the contractors that you've-
Nobody's gotten back to me, they're all, the problem is, everybody's busy, this is hot season. All I've gotten is a possibility that it's an end of year, October type thing if there's time. If not, we'll be sitting on it till spring, but we'll know if nobody bids. I think we should bid it out and see if we can get something.
Okay, I can, I have contact information for Norm Patino, who is the person who did the estimates for both the Village Square and the Upper Cabot Road that we came-
So someone could just get in touch with me that would willing to, I just try to use someone to meet me long enough to say, this is what we wanna do and I'll put it in the little blurb there, if this is what our expectation is.
Okay, so let me, let me give you his contact information, I can give it to you.
Just email it to me and I'll, 'cause I'll have it ready, I was gonna have it ready at this meeting, but I just can't.
Yeah.
Only one line, I got left, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah, so I'll get the, his contact information to you. And then we'll go from there, okay. So next on the list is the V-Trans, we have- So this is, and I think I sent this to you guys, I'm pretty sure I did, would have been just a couple of days ago, maybe before the weekend. This is a grant agreement, 18 pavings long, a lot of it's just kind of boilerplate state contract stuff. The crux of it is, let's see, where is, the amount, so basically the grant would be for $150,000. This V-Trans would pay $135,000 of that and then-
That's the estimate for the Cabot Road?
That's, that's what the grant, that would be the total for the grant.
For fixing the wash, around the washout, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the main focus, if there's money left over, then we can use the money left over from this grant to reimburse us for some of the county road washout, culvert washouts that happened at that same event. But, you know-
So this will get us to the point where we can start sending out some bids?
Yes, you know, if we, you know, if we agree to the grant award agreement, then, and get it back to them, then, yeah, so-
It's kinda hard to say we don't disagree with it, 'cause we haven't even seen a price.
Well, we won't get a price, we'll, you know, we'll put it out to bid and we'll get, we'll get prices from that.
We'll get prices that way, yeah.
What we have, what we don't have yet is the scope of the work.
Yeah.
Which is still being worked on by some different state agencies, so we don't have that yet. This would be, this would be a grant agreement that would assure us that the money is there waiting for us.
So we need to sign this and get it back to them?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And we should do that.
And then, you know, and then when we get the scope of work, 'cause they're trying to figure out what would be the best fix for that or whether they would have a couple of scenarios, so we would have the scope of work so that we could put together an RFP, send it out. And then part of that would be a mandatory site visit, so the people who are bidding on the RFP would be there, there would be people from the state there, from V-Trans, they could explain what needs to be done, the contractors, you know, could hear that firsthand from someone who knows what the project and what needs to be done rather than me or any of us. They could ask questions, so they'd have a better sense of what the work is involved and then they would go back and put together their bids, submit them, and then we would choose. Shawna Clifford mentioned that she has some contractors that she know, she knows could do the work, she is requesting that we send them a bid. And so we would do that and then we'll see who else kind of, you know, bids it. She doesn't want somebody to bid on it who, you know, will find out, yeah, not qualified and will find out that they're over their heads.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
It makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Is it anticipated on doing the work this fiscal year?
Yes, we have to do it this year.
But getting reimbursed may not be this fiscal year?
Yeah, it should be, because, you know, this work will be done before snow flies.
Or it won't be getting done.
It won't be getting done this year, and that's a possibility, I suppose. I mean, it's just kinda late to, again, to be doing this. And then we would have, you know, we could, we have, we have to put together invoices and all, blah, blah, blah.
I'm just planning ahead, if it's hers, the date again and then-
Yeah, I think, you know, I could ask Shawna what the turnaround would be once we put in our full report. It does seem like it takes the state at least a couple of months to-
To pay us.
To pay, flip it around, yeah.
So if I can get a copy of that after you guys sign it, that way I can start filing for the grant and then-
It would certainly be very nice to get this done and Dan Giannis' culvert at the same time. It would certainly be very nice to get this done and Dan Giannis' culvert at the same time. Or would we do that ourselves?
That's not part of this...
Not part of that.
That's another great Chuck project, someone to bury a couple culverts.
Yeah, and I think the road crew could do that too.
But just give, again, if there's time issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know that was important to Ronnie, to get those two culverts put in up there.
This grant is to remedy damage down, yeah, basically.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so there's this part. Everything else is a problem. On Town Highway Two Cabot Road, the roadway slope eroded leaving a vertical face in the downhill lane compromised. In addition, two culverts on Town Highway Six County Road were washed out. Reason for problem, heavy localized rain on May 19th, 2019. You know, so many inches of rain caused brooks to rise quickly, which inundated culverts and caused erosion to the road embankment. Scope of work, construct a retaining wall on Cabot Road. And County Road replaced the culverts and repaired the road washouts. That work's already been done.
So we'll get reimbursed for that.
Yeah, so the town's 10% match on this is roughly $15,000. And then the rest, this is a letter that I wrote explaining the situation that Shawna submitted. And then attachments, see standard state provisions for contracts and grants.
Okay, yeah.
It's all standard stuff. So, and then the place for us to sign, let's see, it's probably... Here's another just kind of basic breakdown of the amounts. This is another standard thing for insurance. And I think, I think probably the town has to provide information about this. So, and then where is the part? I didn't see it, let's see the last page.
Yeah, we usually have them a copy of ours to pick up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's weird, there's no place for us to... Oh wait, I forgot, it's too... Okay, so let me start at the beginning.
Double sided, isn't it?
It's double sided, yeah.
Estimated completion date.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Has good luck in there.
Yeah.
Right behind the paving in the town square.
So here's where we need to sign. So it sounds like as a chairperson, I could sign it for the select board. So I guess first of all, I would make a motion that we sign the agreement, grant agreement with V, for the V-Trans Town Highway Emergency Grant. Yeah, so I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I will sign it.
Kind of like we have to do this, so bitter pill, but eat it up. And smile.
So at some point, because the work on County Road was done last fiscal year, those timesheets would have to be...
Yeah, sort of like the grants and aid thing, you know, we'll put together the timesheets, the slips.
Just the only reason I'm saying that is because, again, it'll be an accounts receivable...
Mm-hmm.
In this fiscal year, hopefully.
In this fiscal year, hopefully.
Yes.
From an expense that was last fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay, so I will, I guess, I might leave this here for you guys to scan and send to them.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, so I'll probably leave it here in the morning as I head out for work before folks are here. Actually, I have tomorrow afternoon free, so I'll try to get here before you guys leave and have this, have the address that this came from.
Well, I can scan it right now and bounce it through my email, and you can forward it to them.
Okay. That would be great. That would be great.
My own copy.
Yeah, and I will, you want the whole thing? Because I could send this to you digitally.
That's fine.
Okay.
Hopefully get it back in order, right?
Well, fortunately, the pages are numbered, so it's probably not in order right for the moment, but let's move on. All right, so highway equipment, I'm calling this device a burmer.
The burmer.
The burmer. And a mower brush cutter. So where are my little... So Greg has, he, and I know you've done some more research on the burmer.
Yeah, which I gave him the updated quote, it was seventeen something.
And this would be, so just to bring you up to speed, Brian, if...
I think I sent you a copy of it, too.
Yeah, Greg, Greg looked at the video that Paul had sent, and he noticed in one clip of it, he said, "Oh, that looks like a bucket loader attachment." Looks like they were releasing it from a bucket loader. So he talked to Paul about that. Paul did some research into that, and they do make this burmer piece of equipment so that it can attach to a bucket loader. And it's, it would attach to our...
It's designed for that cat attach, cat system.
So that's what we decided to focus on. You know, the bucket loader could go in front of the grader.
Yeah, I was thinking the same, I think I saw some pictures of it, I was thinking the same. It'd be better on the bucket loader.
Actually, after our meeting, we had, I went over to the town garage and met with Greg, and we looked at the bucket, it seemed to make a lot, part of it was the view. Trying to look down, the grader you could, but the problem is a little bit behind you.
Bucket loader's set right there.
And if you put it on the town truck, you're not even gonna see over there. So the loader, you're gonna be looking right down on the equipment, because it's going to take a little bit of operating, because we have culverts and we have rocks.
Well, yeah, I just, I just hope it's something that works for us, I'm gonna get it here. Because it's an unknown quantity. There's probably places it'll work great, or maybe something else.
It's not alone, Greg called Alan May.
Yeah.
For the Better Roads.
Who he did, because he had said he was gonna call somebody. If I had called around, but nobody logos, all western people.
Well, there is, he called Alan May, and Alan May said, "Yes, there are people over in Chittenden, Edison County..."
They are, okay.
"...that are using this, and they do use it on a bucket loader."
Yeah.
And we could go look at it.
Check it out. Do you say they're happy with it?
Yeah, he said, "But they tend to use it first thing in the spring, when the ground is soft."
Yes.
And then it just, then they're...
Doesn't use it after.
Yeah, so, so I know Greg may go make a trip over there just to see the thing, see how it works.
Yeah, that would be super.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Because this is a step in my mind, the reason I looked it up, trying to find a way to get us accelerating on this problem we have.
That's something, on a bucket loader, we could train a sub to run it. You know, so that Greg could still be in the grader, and Greg could be doing what he's doing.
Exactly.
You know, and it's...
Because if this works for most of the burms, I realize it may not work perfect everywhere. Because there's places the ledge comes right out, and there's places trees, and there's nothing that's gonna work good there, except for the excavator, the edge of the grader. But if we can increase the proficiency of the hours they're spending, and we're recovering that material and not hauling it away and dumping it.
It'll help us clean some of these dishes out.
We're gonna use that material back in the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because what it's gonna do is recover those burms, and some places they're two feet wide and a foot high.
Yeah. It would, it would work for a good part of the...
Because just driving around, there's a lot of places you're gonna be able to move along and just clean it right out.
Yeah.
And then maybe something, you know, maybe other towns would be interested in it, and maybe they're going to...
They're probably gonna come and look at it.
Really want to defer to Greg, who has to use it, to say, "No, this is stupid," or, "Didn't he seem to like the idea?"
And Greg has been trying to get more information about the mower, you know, brush cutter, and still hasn't had much love, but is still kind of working on that part.
We're mowing stuff lately, but...
Right, yeah.
The mowing wasn't...
Wasn't good, it was crappy looking, yeah. So I don't know what we gotta do to make a, get a better finished cut, either the well machine isn't...
This machine, you know, hopefully this machine would do that, that's the, that's the thing. So, but trying to, you know, trying to get more information if there is somebody, trying to get some references from people that use it.
I came up with Greg one day when he was using that to cut, and it's like, man, it was not cut, it still looks long. Yeah, it was crappy underneath it, so, yeah. Yeah, we gotta find a better way to do our roads.
Yeah. And there's still, there's still the intention of financing both of these pieces of equipment through the Union Bank, hopefully.
And we have some money in that fund we could use on it, too, right?
Well, we could, yeah, Bernie's been mentioning that, but we could also, you know, either use some of that money or finance it with what we pay every year.
For the mowing.
For the mowing.
Yeah.
Which, you know, if we're to have, one year it's one week, the next year it's two weeks, so it's thirty, you know, it was $3,200 this year. If we, and it's usually every other year's cycle. So we're spending about $9,000 plus every two years. So if we're, if we could make, have like a payment schedule that was about $4,500 a year, it wouldn't be any addition to the budget.
And if it proves efficiency and they can spend more time doing it.
Right.
Because I realize, you know, a lot of branches they can cut with that, and maybe the first few years may spend a lot of time doing it, but then you can be able to maintain it.
Yeah, forget it there all the time.
The same with the burming tool, is, you know, you're gonna spend a lot of time initially fixing, but then afterwards you'll be able to maintain it.
Yeah, and they could use it when they need it.
They'd have time to use it.
Rather than one week, that, you know, we have to book the mower a year ahead of time usually to get it. And, you know, like, one of the thoughts Greg has, you know, this wild treble that is invasive, and, you know, it's already, by the time we got the mower, it had flowered and gone to seed, so...
Too late.
Yeah, but they could cut it before it goes to seed, it would help the spread of it. The brush cutting part, we could use anytime.
Because those trees that rainy day, out there, just whack a little sedge back.
In the loader, yeah.
But we need to, you know, we need to find out more information about that.
Yeah, it's like, we can't grade on a rainy day, but we could go do this.
You could cut brush.
Right, yeah. So, you know, pending some more information about the mower cutter. They both seem like worthwhile investments, especially if it doesn't, isn't gonna raise the yearly budget to pay for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, because to me, efficiency on what we're doing.
Yeah, because we have days where nothing happens if it's a wet rainy day in the spring or something, and they could be doing something with these.
And it's desperately needed, it's not like it's just, oh, we should do it, it's like, no, no, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, so, yeah, so I think, you know, let's keep, just get a little more information.
Yeah, maybe I'd like to get moving forward on it, if you can get the, it sounds like it's a good way to go on the burming tool and just gotta solve the brush cutter.
Yeah, so if we can get them...
Get them into use.
Yeah, get a little more information on this, and, you know, we could maybe try to have both of them ready to go next spring, summer.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so we'll keep, keep working on that. And Greg, you know, Greg is, he's been calling, there's a, this company makes the mower or brush cutter specifically to go on a cat bucket loader. So he's been trying to get ahold of the rep, and they kind of want him to go through the local...
Dealer.
Dealer, which is Fairfield over in Morrisville.
Fairfield's cat dealer?
At least for this piece of equipment.
Yeah, for the piece, yeah.
I don't think CAT makes it, but they make it specific for CAT.
Yeah, yeah, this is made for CAT. So, so he's still making phone calls, pretty much, and not really connecting with the right person. But he's working on it. So we had talked a little bit more about equipment, the ten-wheelers and the grader. And maybe, you know, at this point, it's already five after eight, let's save that for our next, our next...
Our next conversation. Well, give us a precursor on what he's talking about, something we can think about.
So, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, he's thinking that, okay, so we'll get one more year out of the 2013 ten-wheeler.
Probably gotta turn one of those trucks over, not literally, but...
So he's, he's gonna be contacting Charle Boys to see, first of all, you know, what they would give him as a trade-in towards a new ten-wheeler. And, you know, then, and then the second one, whether we try to stretch another couple of years out of it or not.
We're just trying to get those purchases a little further apart, so we may only be paying one dump truck lease at a time.
Yeah, it'd be really nice.
Because if we can set some money ahead, where you're paying half or...
We get the better of the two trucks and try to make it last.
Make it last two or three.
I don't know if one's got more miles than the other, or hours than the other.
Yeah, the ten-wheeler that we're looking to replace has, let's see, I wrote it down here somewhere, has 70,000 miles on it. And of course, it'll be seven years if we were to trade it in next year, it would be the seven years, which seems to be the standard kind of replacement time on it.
That's why I'm here, doing seventy-eight years.
And then, you know, as far as a grader, on, I think it was, I think it was Friday morning. You know, it seems to pop up pretty regularly that you can get a pretty new, pretty decent used grader for about $150,000. On Friday, there was one that Greg pulled up on a laptop. It was a 2016 grader, it had, I think, I don't have all that, I'll never find those out.
Okay, where does we get it?
But it, you know, it had 3,500 hours on it, 2016, $150,000. It was in West Virginia, so obviously it was gonna be cost getting here, but... So what I'd like us to do is start, is sit down at our, you know, we'll have it on the agenda for our next select board meeting, and it'd be great to have the town treasurer sitting in on it with us. Let's look at, you know, how much money we're gonna be putting away each year. Hopefully, we'll have a sense of what we might be getting as a trade-in value, and what the cost would be.
That'd be great if you could find somebody that could give them a rough estimate of what the money was.
Yeah, Charle Boys could do that.
They can.
Yeah, I think we need to get these rigs on a spreadsheet, and then put some anticipated dates, so it's not a surprise to us.
No, work, let's work out a plan.
Yeah, so we know in X amount of years, we've gotta have X amount of dollars.
A plan, and we can kind of refer to the last HERF schedule that skipped a particular two.
And then fund it and stick with it.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
That way, he's also got some surety of when equipment's gonna be turned over. It's not like, oh, well, can't you keep it a little couple more years?
Right. I hope that we can come up with a...
You should.
A three-year to five-year kind of plan on what we can do here, and where our costs and...
Everything's expensive.
Right. But, you know, a used, a new grader is like $300,000 plus, so getting, getting one that's not... And this would, you know, this grader is, it's four-wheel drive.
You want a four-wheel drive heavier.
Yeah, heavier, and with all of the newer kind of parts and stuff on it.
Some state had a CAT grader set down there last weekend, from the highway garage. I was gonna ask Roy if that was there for turnover, auction, or what.
It's only got 100 hours, and they'd like to donate it somewhere. It never happens in real life.
Chances are, theirs don't have many hours on them.
No, they don't really have much use for them.
Yeah, they use them in the winter a little bit.
Yeah. So, okay, so...
That's their little precursor.
Just some other things, the Islam, I guess, you know, the gravel that Wendell Azworth requested was delivered. The crew, I have them, I call Vermont Local Roads and basically have the crew, the whole crew, I think, signed on to, there's different online training programs for road crews that they're, they're signed on to, and they'll also be getting notify, notifications of different hands-on, day-long trainings for different pieces of equipment. Most of, most of that happens in May, and then after the summer, you know, so it's kind of in the fall and the spring, so...
Because I was gonna ask about, there must be training programs to teach people how to run a grader, to teach people how to, you know, I would be really in favor of sending all the employees.
Yeah, there's one particular training that I think Greg would like all of them to go to sometime towards the end of August, I can't remember what it was, and then there's another kind of general town highway, um, road maintenance, uh, training, um, over in Stowe in September, that, that probably the, you know, two part-timers.
It's just a great way to learn the latest methods, what's out there, what to watch out for, you know, if you don't ever get out in the valley, you never find out.
Yeah, and then we did, um, we had the site visit for this year, this fiscal year's, uh, municipal roads general permit grants and aid program, um, that would be the section of Valley Lake Road, uh, coming down to Kirkland, so it's that twisty bit of road that's pretty well washed out at the moment, um, so, and then a possibility, another segment, um, on Valley Lake Road a little further off, um, depending on how much.
Now, you would put the paperwork in on the one by the school in our building, is that still out there, the grant to do that?
That, um, yeah, that's for a design plan and, um.
We haven't heard back from that yet.
The state has still not, um, that's through the Regional Planning Commission, and the state still hasn't, um, either they haven't sent the money or they haven't officially awarded the grant.
So we're just waiting, okay.
We're waiting, so it's, another one of those.
Sent it in, I was just trying to.
Yeah, yeah, everything is in, um, and it's a matter of waiting for the, for the state to.
Hopefully it'll take as long as.
Yeah, but, yeah.
They don't set the bar very high.
No.
Um, and that's pretty much it for the.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'll get into the details of the road crew work, um, just because of the time, yeah. Basically, they've been doing a lot of grading and, um, some ditch work and plug culvert work and replacing culvert work.
Yes, I know they're over there working on the counter, they really need to get that section from hubby road down all the way down to my house.
That's, that's the next on the plan, yeah.
That's really bad.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Because they graded it, it softens right up, right, you fixed the end of my road, but because the water's not getting off it, it just went right to crap right again, so it just needs to get there and get it done.
So, um, conflict of interest policy, I contacted the LCT, I talked to Garrett Baxter, he's the lead lawyer there, and he basically told me that, that, um, both, we could, the town could do it the two ways, we could have the conflict of interest policy approved at a town meeting, so the town body approves it, or the select board also has the, uh, and that's where the two state statutes, one says, select board, uh, select board has, that's one of our regulatory powers.
Yeah.
Or, and then there's another state statute that says town meeting, so he said that's where, a perfect example of where state statutes contradict each other.
Right, because they, nobody talked when they made them.
Right, so it's okay for us to approve it as a select board, or if we wanna go through the town meeting process and wait till spring town meeting, we could do it that way too.
I'm in favor of doing it now, rather than waiting.
I am too, because it's, it's complicated. Now, understanding though, that because we're all elected town officials, there's really no enforcement of this thing, it's just.
Right, there, the only time there's really any enforcement, I guess, is when it's an appointed official that isn't.
An appointed, yeah.
Isn't, um, zoning administrator or on the zoning level of adjustment, so if, like, if our animal control officer was hanging dogs out of, off his front tray or something, and, you know, we could unappoint him.
Can you imagine going through this at an open public meeting?
Right.
Yeah, you'd be there all day.
Yeah, and according to Laura, you know, we should have had something in place by July first this year, so, um, so I would, you know, I'm, I am in favor of just us approving this, um, so, uh, I can, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve, um, the policy regarding conflicts of interest and ethical conduct for the town of Woodbury.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so there's a place for us all to sign.
Another one of the policy manual.
Yeah. And let's see, twenty-second of July, two thousand and nineteen, two, okay, and then there's one last thing on the agenda, which, it'd be for you guys to know, and we should discuss briefly, and, did you have something that you wanted to, just, actually, I would like you here to hear what I'm gonna say next about the school roof. Okay, so I will, um, we'll get this scanned and sent to the LCT, and they'll be very happy.
We're legal.
And again, thanks to Laura for even finding out that we, I had, didn't have a clue that we were.
Yeah, she should have a policy for everything pretty much, that's what I'm finding out.
Yeah, so I was just gonna update you on the school roof stuff, and then, um, I got a call, email from Larry last week, um, and there is a, a snafu, a small one, um, but we should, we should discuss it, um, so I was gonna let you know that work has finally begun on the school roof.
Saw that.
Yeah, they started, uh, last week setting up the, um, the, whatever you call it, scaffolding, um, so they did get up, they're gonna work on the front part of the school first, so that's pretty much done, um, in case there's, you know, stuff going on, people going in and out of the school, um, and they're also working on the entryway, which is sep, totally separate from the school roof and, and the town's involvement, that was a, a grant that.
Redoing a double door there, so you'll have a, you'll go down or up, there'll be a door in the middle, so you can't just walk in and go down or up.
Yeah, so they'll have control over.
So if you go into the office, you can't just go upstairs.
So that's a, that's a state.
It's always been a weird thing when you go into the school, you gotta go down the basement, hang a left, go into the office.
Now you'll go in the door on the right, you'll go down to the office, they'll have to buzz you through to get into the school upper part.
Which makes sense, yeah, and that's. All schools have got this.
Yeah, and that's being paid for, it's either state or federal. Um, so they started removing the old shingles on that, from part of the roof, and, um, there isn't any sheathing underneath, it's just old boards, the boards are in okay shape, um, but, um, and, you know, the, but the issue is, is that, um, the shingles won't be warranted without the sheathing.
Without layer of plywood, so we gotta put the plywood on.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And the total amount is?
The total amount is, um, and Larry wants to dicker with them about this, um, the total amount would be eighteen thousand dollars above the fifty-one thousand dollars that was still.
Kind of expected.
And they had, you know, there was a part in the bid, and I just, I've got the bids, I wanted to review that so Larry and I could talk about it, um, it was, they were, they had, um, in case anything, any board, any, any of the sub.
Yeah.
Part needed to be replaced, they had a four dollar per square foot amount, which is basically the eighteen thousand dollars. The east side, the, which is basically the backside of the school, that does have sheathing on it, so that part wouldn't have to be done.
Okay.
But part of the, um, part of what we wanna dicker with them about is that, um, they were not very, they didn't come up with that information about, um, requirements for the warranty with the shingling until they were already into the project. This guy that's the project overseer from Watershed, you know, when we first gave them the bid, he was gonna get us, get us the information about the shingles, he never did, um, he contacted us beginning of July saying, oh, we're gonna be there in a couple of weeks, um, you know, and I contacted him, we still haven't got any information about the shingles, and, and, and he said, oh, I'll get them to you right off, still didn't get them to us, and then when we did the site visit, um, the Friday before the Monday when they were gonna start the work, this guy was off on vacation, the people that came, you know, didn't know anything about the shingles, um, and, you know, so it just seems that they've been somewhat negligent in knowing this ahead of time, so Larry, um, Larry and I talked about it, we both agreed that, you know, yes, we want the sheathing, but, you know, it's an additional cost, and they should have known about the warranty requirements before they started.
Should have been in the bid form.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna do some dicker.
Squeeze them a little bit, okay.
Squeeze them a little bit, and Larry may have already done that today, you know, I, I was working all day, I had, you know, twenty minutes to get home from work and get down here, so I am in contact with him, but I now have the bids and, um, hopefully, um, catch up with Larry.
I would look at it, because we did get a good bid price on this.
We did get a good perspective.
I, I kind of anticipated that we weren't gonna get off scot-free on the decade, so not a building that'll.
Yeah, so the upside is it'll be at least eighteen thousand, hopefully a little bit less.
Yeah, and they may find something else along the way.
Wouldn't surprise me at all.
Yeah.
Wouldn't surprise at all, yeah, but, yeah, it's gotta be done.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're into it now.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let, let you guys know that. That's pretty much it, I can, I'll try to update you after I meet with Larry, you know, tomorrow, I'm hoping I'll be able to meet with him tomorrow, so we can go over this. So do you have anything else for us before we adjourn, or?
I just wanna give you the packets.
Okay.
Since you have the binder, that's for the, the check itself, a copy.
Okay.
That's for the grant back, and then these are the tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
Stuff goodies.
Okay.
And then, two keep in mind, as far as the class four and outside services, and what.
Well, we budgeted for this year, this fiscal year, yeah, my anti-space.
And even, even as far as Greg doing it, um, keeping in the back of his mind, the class four, if the gravel for it, if that's one.
We're budgeting it toward that class four stuff, yeah.
So that's, yeah.
Yeah, I think he, I think he had, has he been doing that? He should have been, um, I can mention.
He's supposed to be coding it as such.
Yeah.
He writes where it's for, but it's always been gravel, so.
Okay.
Just go, going forward, knowing that we're doing North Road and we're doing.
Applied to class four roads, right.
Is that okay, him just writing class four, do you have budget codes for this?
He has a code, he knows.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure he's doing that, because he, you know, we talk about the class four budget from time to time, and I would imagine by the time we get done with the old Corey Road and the gravel that we've.
And North Road, yeah.
North Road, and even the private roads, I suppose we should put that.
Toward the, yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we don't get, if we don't get paid back from it, yeah.
Was put it into the, into the gravel.
Yeah, so, you know, like, Herrick's Cove Road, we were paid for the gravel, um, and whereas, um, this South Road, which basically is a private road, it's not part of the North Road, and the town has paid for that, so, okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, yeah. So I would make a motion, oh, now, do we want to go into the executive session, um?
I, I don't need to.
Okay, Coleman seemed to be.
Coleman didn't have a proposal.
Yeah, okay, so we're really.
I think we can just, with that record, just to say, there it is, but.
Yeah, so for the record, basically, Coleman is paying for the work that's already been done.
He's done so far, and we will pay for the continued work and.
That's good, we kind of expected to.
It sounded like he didn't get.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because again, I'll just, I, I reiterate, I, I thought, initially I was like, yeah, and then I started thinking about, what happens if someone does some crazy amount of work and comes in with a ten thousand dollar bill that we didn't, you know, not saying that that's going to, but it could happen.
That would open the door.
When we set the precedent, say, well, you didn't fix the road, so I fixed it, and we put in the best material, and I'm like, ooh, we, and we could get a home decor bill.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So again, I think our, our standing policy needs to be, and I think it's been, is that if you're going to work in a town road, you need to get permission first, that way we agree, I like what we did with this, that we, particularly, I, I don't think this issue's going away, when we get to the top, he's all fuzzy about what's what, off at the top, and I'm really.
Sounds like we do need to.
That was a hotly contested issue back.
Okay, so that's before, that's out of.
We just remembered, remember where the, where the road goes like this, and then we turned it here, and like, I don't, that was an Amesward Coleman thing.
Okay, so I guess we should, at some point, figure that part out.
If it, I mean, I'm kinda like, if, if it doesn't need to be, if he's not gonna.
Just let.
Just gonna let a sleeping dog lie until, because somewhere our right-of-way goes through the air, you see what I'm saying with this?
The new road was put in, but I don't know if it was ever laid out and.
Well, that's what I was saying, because he was really vague about.
I don't know who put that in, I think we did.
Yeah, he says he bought the land, but then, I don't know, I don't know.
Sick of the town, put it in, but I can't.
And trying to find an official record of that would be.
Of when it might have been, yeah.
So I, I'm assuming this issue's gonna come up again, because if he builds a spec house, is what I heard he wants to build there, or sell lots, then someone's gonna want.
He would, I think he would like to develop it a little bit.
Yeah, so that's where this is all going, and that's why I made it clear to him that, my feeling, and it's been our policy, is those roads are usable, and we need to control the erosion according to the state, that's what we're gonna do, and if you want it improved beyond that, it's at your expense.
Yeah.
If he wants it, if he wants it widened and culverged and crowned, and that's on them, yeah.
A lot of times, towns have done that, they've let the contractors build the roads bigger and better.
We're not still maintaining it.
But then we accept them.
You could, we, in its spot, because I know our section, the county road way back in the day, used, used to stop right at Bob Lord's camp, and over ten years, they extended that road down, and I, and I know back then, I wasn't involved in it, but the deals were if the, I think the landowners paid for the bulldozing and all the ditching, and the town came in, put the culvert and the gravel, and it was a deal, but it was all, like you said, it was worked out beforehand, and then this town said, yes, we will take this over.
Yeah.
And a lot of places we're gonna do that, there's not contention, nobody's gonna argue about it, but if there is, then you've gotta go through these processes, I think.
And my, in the first form conversation with Howard Coleman, he didn't realize that he needed to get the town's commission to work on the road, he just figured it was running through his property and that he could do, you know.
And people do it all over town, they'll go and work on a town road, just because it's, they drive on it, and they wanna make it better, and that's fine, but.
It's never an issue till it's contested, that's the problem.
Just don't come down and ask us to pay for it after.
Or if you know you got neighbor troubles, that's where the problem, that's where we're, that's why we're here to mediate those things, that's why you gotta have, because if everybody's happy, nobody cares what happens, but when somebody's unhappy.
I'm amazed he comes down the long way anyways, it's gotta be a lot shorter just to go up onto the Cabot Road from where he is up there.
I've got, I've never been on that road fully.
From his end, it's a lot shorter to go from the Cabot Road onto his.
Yeah, you need to understand that road.
Because you've seen, it's not nice, that whole section up to where you get to where Coleman's pull-off is, it's just not a very nice piece of road.
Yeah.
It's way nicer from the top down.
Yeah.
But again, it's not our choice, because if it's a town road, then it's still a class four, and I think Rick understood that too, that he can't stop him from using it, it's just.
Right, and I know from the baron's point of view, the least amount of, that that road is used, that's.
Better.
That's the preference, just for the own privacy.
I think his big thing was making sure, this needed to be talked to, and I, and I didn't realize the extent of the erosion problem that's going in his pond, it's going in, that really needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it does.
And that's a town problem.
That's a town problem, not a Coleman problem, that's our, it's on us.
Yeah, that's our road.
That's why I wish people would talk instead of letting things fester.
Right.
Like, if Coleman was unhappy, that's why I told him, if you're unhappy with the road.
Let us.
Let us know, we'll do something about it, don't come in here and say, you guys never fixed the road, it's like, well, I don't love the road, and I don't use the road.
We don't maintain fours regularly, so, yeah, but the berry's gonna continue to grow and.
We're gonna have more of this, that's why it's important that we follow a process on it, so we don't get caught somewhere.
And we are, you know, technically, class four roads now, those parts that are hydrologically connected anyway, we are responsible for the erosion on them.
As I said, once we fix this portion, we need to keep it up, because it's one we can check off.
Yeah, I'll have to look and see if that road.
I bet it is.
Yeah, to see, yeah, you know.
No rivers above it, but it's just.
Have, you know, the fact that it runs out in, you know, ran out into Rick and Sarah's meadow.
On pond.
The state's not worried about that, because that doesn't go into the water.
Right, but in the pond, it's going in.
Yeah, and, yeah.
But it limits you to, where else is it gonna go, down the side of the road, through the, the bottom of.
You know, eventually we'll come into.
Well, it's gonna get to the, get to, uh, Lake Hill Road, and it'll be down into the Kingsbury branch, once it's there.
So obviously a neat turnout, so you can put in first, there's less water going each time, so.
Common sense would tell me it's hydraulically connected, but I don't know what their standard is. All right.
So make a motion that we adjourn?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.